October 6, 2020, the border. This is the first meeting that we're having in the hybrid manner. So we have some members present in the media center and then others are joining remotely. In the event the board has not finished addressing all the items listed in the October 6, 2020 agenda, the board will reconvene at 6:00 PM on October 7, 2020, the next business day to finish the agenda item. Requests for the first public comments participation will be accepted between 5:00 and 5:30 by sending an email with your name, phone number, and topic to robin.cushingberry@beaufort.k12.sc.us. You will receive a phone call during the public comments where you'll be able to speak and address the board for a maximum of three minutes on issues within the board's domain. The forum will be limited to 30 minutes. Requests for the second public comments will be accepted between 7:00 and 7:30 in the same manner as above. The second public comments will take place prior to adjournment, no later than 9:00 PM. The second forum will be limited to 15 minutes. Since this is our first hybrid meeting, I just want to review some notes that may be helpful to those that are here in person and those attending virtually. For you that are attending virtually, sign on to Zoom using the current process. The camera in the meeting room here in the media center will focus on the speaker. It takes five to eight seconds for the camera to refocus on a new speaker. You will hear the person talking as the camera moves to the voice. Continue to use electronic hands to participate, and please remember to put your hand down after you've participated because that's really the only way I can keep the meeting flowing efficiently since we have people in different areas. The board members attending in person, the room is set up with respect to social distancing in the media center. We're wearing masks. The room camera will focus on the speaker, so it is extremely important that there are no sidebar conversations because the microphone will pick up the sidebar conversations. We're participating by Zoom, so we appear on the large screen in the media center. Your computer iPad volume must be turned all the way down and the computer iPad microphone must be turned off. All right. Now we have the need to go into executive session. So if we have a motion to go into executive session, I'll let that person making the motion read the different reasons for executive session. Mr. Dallin.
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that we go into executive session with following matters. Discussion of personnel matters pursuant to SC Code and Section 30-470A1 and South Carolina Code and Section 30-44-40A2. And receipt of legal advice relates to pending, threatened, or potential claim and other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege pursuant to South Carolina Code and Section 30-470A2. In addition, discussion of contract negotiations related to proposed custodial services contract, RFP 21-005 pursuant to South Carolina Code and Section 330-4-70A2. In addition, discussion of contract negotiations related to proposed construction manager at risk rooms for the construction associated with the Robert Smalls International Academy and Valley Creek High School referendum funded projects, RFP number 21-002 pursuant to South Carolina Code and Section 30-4-70A2. In addition, adult home and school reports. And finally, employment matter regarding personnel documentation report pursuant to South Carolina Code in Section 30-4-70A1.
Mr. Earl Campbell, second. Molly, can you please put this participant in? So I see, Ms. Orshak. Ms. Orshak.
Thank you. Can someone confirm is the first employee matter, Code A1 and Code A2, is that the matter that the board took action on at the September 15 meeting, at the end of the meeting? Where the superintendent would bring back information to the board?
Yes, it is.
It is, okay, okay. So, you know, Matt, now, the attorney-client privilege. Is this attorney, first of all, who's the attorney here? Are they representing Dr. Rodriguez? Are they representing the board? Could someone clarify that?
They're representing... They're representing the district.
I'm getting a very pronounced echo. Could you please repeat your response, Dr. Rodriguez?
They are representing the district.
And who is that attorney?
That is Bernie Williams.
Hello, Bernie, long time no see.
Hey, how are you doing, Ms. Orshak? You're right, it's been a while, it's been a while.
Again. The, the motion that was made by Mr. Guyer at our last meeting, and I'll just read it aloud. A motion was made that the board direct the superintendent to gather information on the personnel matter addressed in the executive session and present that to the board, and the following words are critical here, without conclusion or recommendation during executive session at the next meeting, which of course is tonight. So I'm concerned about receiving counsel because according to this board action that I just read, there would be no recommendations brought forward to the board, and that is the purpose of counsel this evening.
Mr. Williams.
I was gonna say, is that, is that question directed to me, Ms. Orshak? Can y'all hear me okay?
Well, I, I would prefer to direct that to our superintendent because it was a direction to him.
And Mr. Williams is, is here providing information.
Point of, point of order, Madam Chair.
What's your point?
Would you ask the superintendent if he has his microphone shut off on his laptop? That may be causing the echo.
It's on.
It was a horrible echo. Speak, would you, would you ask everyone wearing a mask to speak extra slowly? It's a little more difficult to make out what they're saying.
Okay. Molly, could we, please have somebody from IT come here now? Oh, thank you. Do you want to continue, Trump?
I mean, two folks to them.
Oh, that's, yeah.
Does this help?
Not really.
So, good. Thanks. So, Mr. Williams is going to present information to the board in concert with the board's direction.
Molly.
Did you see me? I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. One second, I lost my, lost my, what I need to read here. Okay. I want to, we have a problem with this. Before I ask my question, I want to read to you the exact language from Section 3470A1 in the Freedom of Information Act. It is as follows. Discussion of employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, or release of an employee, a student, or a person regulated by a public body, or the appointment of a person to a public body. Which of those criteria does that matter, match to?
So, is Carl Lynch or Mr. Williams?
It's Dowling.
Can, can y'all hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, we can hear you.
And, and is it Mr. Dowling?
Yes.
That's the question.
And again, I, I, obviously, it would, it would defeat the purpose of, of executive session to go into too much detail, but I would say the two areas of concern were, one, the receipt of legal advice regarding a potential litigation matter. Because after I assisted the superintendent in gathering the facts, based on those facts, I have a concern that it could potentially lead to litigation depending on how the matter is handled. And then because it involves an employee raising some concerns about the conditions of their employment, it would also be covered under the discussion of employment section of the Freedom of Information Act.
Okay, first of all, employment matters has been discredited for five years now since the State Supreme Court ruled in John Arhew versus North Augusta that such a wide umbrella is not, does not satisfy specific purpose in going into executive session. But more importantly, what, my question has not been answered. The statute says that the only thing you can discuss about an employee in executive session is their appointment, their compensation, their promotion, demotion, discipline, or release of an employee. Now, I was at that last executive session, and the matter discussed had nothing to do with any of this. Therefore, I would be concerned that we entered into the last executive session illegally. Now, the superintendent made a decision not to consult with counsel before that meeting. But that's no excuse. I believe that we entered into executive session inappropriately, outside the law. And if we try to use the A1 for that tonight, we will be doing the very same thing. Now, it was brought up that we're going to get advice about concern. I ask, has there been an actual threat?
Um, I, I think that would depend on how you define, define the term threat. But again, the, the statute does not necessarily say threat, it says potential litigation. So I, I believe, based on the information that was shared for, shared with me directly, there is the potential of litigation.
Uh, well, having not been privy to the information you get, I'll have to take your word for that, but I will be monitoring what we discuss in terms to see if that concern is warranted. Now,
Sure, that's fair.
I would move that we remove the first section, 3470A1, from the, from the motion because we can't make it. If the, the matter does not justify in of itself discussion in executive session.
I'll second.
Please say that again, you're removing section, what are you removing?
I'm removing the verbiage of Section 3470A1.
Okay.
And using South Carolina Code 34-40A2 as the only justification for that particular, for that particular item. I would remind the board that if we do enter into executive discussion and have a discussion on an item that does not meet the exemption, that information in that discussion is not protected. One could say that the discussion we had last meeting is not protected because we went into executive session under an exemption that did not qualify to, on the matter that was discussed. And if it's not protected, if it's not protected, if it's not protected information, then it's public information.
Kathy, Volant.
Yes, in the documents we've received, I page 11 of Mr., uh, of the Robert D. Cook Attorney General from February 11, 2016, it says, "We believe the court's analysis of 3470A1, exception to holding public meetings together with the privacy exception." Clarified at Section 3440A2 illustrates the rationale so-called personnel exception, certainly among the most prominent sunshine legislation, is justified on two grounds. First, a public employee like his counterpart in the private sector has privacy and reputational interests that deserve protection. We have a public employee that I believe deserves these rights.
May I respond, Madam Chair? You, you can protect the identification by redacting the name. This is a late...
Mr. Dowling, your hand is not on.
I took it down like you asked me to. I'll put it back up. May I respond to Kathy?
Uh, yes, Ms. Orshak.
Thank you. Now, a, a matter that may complicate a bit is the motion and the board direction that was made that, um, where I sit here. Well, information should be presented tonight without conclusion or recommendation. So that was the board's very specific direction. And of course, that, that motion passed 10-0. Another matter that could complicate this evening's discussion, a board member, one or more board members requested a document leading up to tonight's executive session. And the, the document was requested publicly. And where Dr. Rodriguez confirmed that he would share the document with all other related information in the next executive session, which is of course this evening. So I did not see that document in our executive session documents when I went to district office to review them. Are we to understand that that document would be presented to the board this evening via screen protect, protection? How, how will that document be presented to the board?
Yes.
Okay, will it be redacted?
No.
No, okay. The, the, the problem that this document potentially raises is it can begin or prompt discussions of individuals that cannot be discussed in executive session. It's a very very tricky issue there. What is the recourse, Bernie, for a board member if he or she feels that we've entered into an illegal area of discussion in executive session?
What is the recourse? I mean, I, I, I think, I think you certainly state your opinion during the executive session and once you come out of executive session. I would caution you, though, about disclosing something publicly that was discussed in executive session. I mean, you, you're putting yourself at risk to the extent you disclose something in executive session that was discussed if it is in fact a prob, considered to be a proper executive session item. Also, I mean, why you could certainly, you could certainly make your, your, you can certainly make your opinion known. And it could be reflected in the way you vote or in your comment as part of the discussion if there's any motion, et cetera. But I think there's a, there's a potential concern if you then disclose something that was proper executive session, a, a proper executive session item once you came out into open session.
Understood, thank you, that, that helps.
Mr. Dowling.
Kathy, I believe I support the privacy of employees, but I also support the law that says the identity of public officials cannot be discussed in executive session. So I think the easiest way around this is to, A, redact the name of the complainant, and number two, advise the complainant that their best recourse is to either file a police report or get an attorney.
All right, are we ready to, to vote?
Is that the motion you made, Mr. Dowling?
No, it is not.
What is the motion, then?
Merely to remove Section 3470A1. Merely to remove section 3470A1.
Okay. Robin, I did not get the prompt.
You've got to first fix the motion on the screen. So that's the corrected motion.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, voting should be open.
Voting is open.
Dowling, yes.
No. I don't have a prompt either. Mel Campbell, yes.
The motion fails. Five yes and six no. Five yes are Dowling, Orshak, Mel Campbell, Rachel Wazneski, and William Smith. Six nos are Earl Campbell, Christina Gwads, David Striviger, Kathy Robine, Tricia Bidrich, and Mr. Richard Dyer. All right. So now, can you go back? Robin input the original motion? Ms. Orshak?
Yes, I just want to explain my vote, if I may, very briefly. I will be voting no to this motion solely for the piece where we discuss the employment matter and the context of attorney-client privilege. I still have very serious reservations that the board should be addressing this matter. It is wrought with peril, and I just-- but all the other matters, I agree with. I just hope that that clearly explains my no vote to go into executive session.
All right. Mr. Dowling?
I will be voting no, because I believe the administration is grasping at straws for an excuse to talk about this in private.
All right. If you could both put your hands down, please. Thank you. Ms. Orshak?
Oh, I apologize. I did not take my hand down.
Mr. Striviger?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just saw something on the chat from Dr. Wazneski about the last vote. Did you get that, Robin?
Um, no. What was the last vote?
Dr. Wazneski said she had changed her vote, but it didn't register. Is that-- Well, Dr. Wazneski can speak for herself on--
Do you want it to be no instead of yes?
Yes.
Yes, it should be no.
Yeah, very much the final vote.
Okay.
Okay. So it still fails four-seven. All right. You can go back to-- Thank you for the correction. We can go back to this original motion. Robin?
I'm trying to get there.
Thank you.
Say-- Trying to say this. Okay.
All right. David, can you also lower your hand, or do you have something else?
No, I'm trying to. I seem to get blocked where it says mute or more, and I can't get to my hand.
I lowered it for you.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, well, I thought I did.
Okay. All right. So voting is now open. There being no further questions?
Voting is open.
Dowling, no.
Yes. Mel Campbell, yes.
The motion carries. Eight yes, three nos. The eight yeses are-- Oh, can you please scroll up? Earl Campbell, Christina Gwads--
It keeps-- I'm sorry. It keeps rolling down by itself.
Thank you. Christina-- Maybe we've got to read the nose. There's less to read.
Yes.
Can you scroll up, though? Okay. Obviously, it's not right.
Right. The computer is not allowing me to keep it there.
Okay. All right. So it looks like the nos are Orshak, Dowling, and Smith. So the motion carries.
We will now call the Beaufort County Board of Education. This is meeting of October 6, 2020. Back to order. This meeting is the first meeting that's being conducted as a hybrid video conferencing meeting, so some members are here in the media center and the district school office and others are connected remotely. So please bear with us, we had a few technical issues. We are now back in public session. We have not completed all of the items yet in the executive session. Do we have any action as necessary or appropriate regarding matters discussed in the executive session? Mr. Guyer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a motion for the Beaufort County School Board to publicly express its disapproval of school board member William Smith's actions resulting in multiple violations of Board Policy 3.4.9 that states, "Members shall make official visits to schools only upon knowledge of the principal. Board members shall not unnecessarily interfere with the day-to-day operations of the school or work location or with the work being performed by employees assigned to that school or work location."
And Mr. Guyer made the motion, a second made by Mr. Earl Campbell. Do you want to speak further to your motion, Mr. Guyer?
Unfortunately, we had multiple violations of this policy. We had violations of this policy over a year ago. And we did not make our displeasure obviously known because it happened again. I can understand a person with passion and initiative making mistakes. Mr. Smith has passion and initiative. But when you make the same mistake twice, actions must be taken. So regretfully, I have made this motion to ensure that this does not happen again. We have had similar instances in county council with Mr. Rodman. We've had similar circumstances resulting in a lawsuit against the county auditor. We cannot have this happen in the school district. That's why, again, reluctantly, I make this motion tonight.
Mr. Steviger?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we postpone this discussion until the next meeting to allow Mr. Smith time to respond to the complaint.
Okay. Ms. Orshak, second. Do you want to speak further, Mr. Smith? I mean, excuse me, Mr. Steviger?
No, ma'am. I just think it's a matter of due process. Mr. Smith needs time to digest the complaint and make his response to the board before we take any action. We need to hear both sides.
Mr. Dowling?
I believe that the motion from Mr. Guyer is akin to sending somebody to prison for running a stop sign. A low-level violation. This is nothing but the continuation of the harassment that certain members of the board have shown to Mr. Smith and is another attempt to intimidate him. Score was not even in session.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
You're talking, Mr. -- Mr. -- go ahead, Mrs. Steviger.
The motion on the floor is about postponement. I believe the discussion should be focused on the merits of postponing this.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll finish up then. I believe that the motion should not even be considered postponed or now. Shame on us. The board is acting like children. I experienced this in the eighth grade, but most of my eighth grade colleagues grew up.
Mr. -- Ms. Orshak?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm perplexed about Mr. Guyer's motion as he later deemed the last round of complaints as simple misunderstandings. So there's the act. Pertaining to both motions, I sent to the board prior to this evening's executive session two South Carolina Attorney General opinions which are quite clear in prohibiting the discussion of elected officials in executive session. And for the public's reference, those two opinions are the March 10, 2004 opinion to Abbeville, their county treasurer, and one a little closer to home and more recent, the February 11, 2016 South Carolina Attorney General opinion to our own Board of Education. They're quite clear. Excuse me, I have the floor.
Well, definitely.
Madam Chair, both are quite clear that the board should not have discussed an elected official in executive session this evening. And again, the board was informed of this prior to this evening, yet they decided to enter knowing full well and having reviewed these opinions.
Ms. Orshak, please add your comments pertaining to the motion which is postponing this discussion.
Any discussion of this, Madam Chair, goes against those Attorney General opinions. It is very clear that this board thinks very little of those opinions.
Thank you for your opinion. Would anybody else like to speak to this that has not spoken about the postponing? Mr. Earl Campbell?
You know, when we -- they -- some people mentioned that we as a whole, and we really have a best care of children. You know, why can't we -- we can disagree, you know, with this back and forth. It doesn't make sense. We need to get over it.
Mr. Dowling?
I'm going to exercise my -- I'm going to exercise my prerogative under the Freedom of Information Act to have the two Attorney Generals' opinions that were referenced included in the minutes of tonight's meeting. Thank you.
Ms. Steviger? Again, I want to support a postponement of this discussion because I do believe that Mr. Smith should be allowed to present his side of the complaint. However, I support Colonel Guyer's motion because to me, when we have a complaint by an employee, we must listen. And this is not the first, and therefore we have to take it very seriously. So I agree with the postponement at this time.
Ms. Robine?
I will support a postponement as well. However, I'd also like to include in the minutes a record of the Attorney, Mr. Williams, that was the name, right? Who stated that we were within the executive session rights with our discussion.
All right, so voting is now open. And we're voting on the motion to postpone. Ms. Robine? Oh, got it, got it. The motion carries eight, three. Yes, sir. Earl Campbell, Christina Blod, David Steviger, Kathy Robine, Melvin Campbell, Tricia Steviger, Rachel Orshak, and Mr. Guyer. The nodes are Mr. Dowling, Ms. Orshak, and Mr. Smith. Do we have any further action as necessary or appropriate regarding matters discussed in the executive session? Ms. Orshak?
Just a process question. Given the outcome of that vote, is Mr. Smith prohibited in some way from speaking freely between now and the next board meeting with anyone regarding the matter? Or was the vote simply to determine when he would provide a formal statement at a board meeting for now?
I'm not sure. I don't quite understand your question.
All right, let me see the motion. You are postponing this discussion the next meeting to allow Mr. Smith to formulate a formal response. Does that mean that he is not free to speak about the matter between now and the next scheduled board meeting to the media, to anyone else he chooses?
I'm not sure. I will let Mr. Williams answer that because you're talking about freedom of speech issue. You're also talking about responding to a complaint officially. I'm not sure what the answer is. Is Mr. Williams with us? No, he's not on at the moment.
Madam Chair, why don't we continue discussion while awaiting Mr. Smith?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. In answer to Ms. Orshak's concern, the motion was made publicly. The complaint was identified publicly. Mr. Smith does not officially speak for the board, but he can speak for himself. There is absolutely no reason why the board should try to intimidate William from speaking out about this. This happened, all happened in public, like it or not. The Freedom of Information Act trumps everything else. Thank you.
Mr. Steviger?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with Mr. Dowling. I believe we established the last time that Mr. Smith was free to speak. I disagree with Mr. Dowling about the board trying to intimidate Mr. Smith. I'm not seeing that. I think Mr. Smith, but I'm not an attorney, so it would be good to get an actual attorney to let us know. But I agree based on common sense with Mr. Dowling.
Yes, and I would add too, yes, I think Mr. Smith can speak, but I think he needs to be mindful of what his speech is. He cannot speak for the board, as Mr. Dowling has pointed out. And he also has a complaint from an employee and must think about speaking about that in terms of future potential legal ramifications. So we're not able to reach him? Okay. All right, so that motion carries. Your motion, Mr. Guyer, would be then placed on the next meeting. Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Madam Chair, so what you just said, is that your recommendation as chair from your -- from your legal perspective? Or what you just said, where did you come up with that?
That's just my personal opinion as a 111th board member. It's my personal opinion.
Okay, I just want to get clarity because, you know, I know from time to time you talk to attorneys, and I just want to ensure whether your attorney or someone you've talked to have said, said, I just want to get a clear understanding of where that came from. Thank you.
We now are -- do we have any further matters coming out of the executive session? So we're now down to approval of the agenda?
Actually, Mr. Dowling has his hand up.
Well, it's to discuss the agenda. I was just getting in the queue. Thank you, William.
Okay, so Earl Campbell made the motion to approve the agenda. Ms. Steviger, second. Mr. Dowling?
Madam Chair, last week, there was a news release from the district that sent off alarm bells throughout the public. The issue of mold in two Whale Branch schools. The school year is only two days old. I believe that the level of public interest in this is such that goes beyond the Whale Branch cluster. So I move that the board vote to include the report from the superintendent on the mold situation to tonight's agenda in his report.
I'll second.
Second. Seconded.
Okay, so is, your Dowling made the motion and Ms. Orishak second? Mr. Dowling?
Uh, no, I just, my preamble said it all. I think that people deserve, and I think that we deserve to, to get more than just the press release that was given. And a chance to ask questions of the superintendent about the problem.
Ms. Orishak?
So, um, John, I have a question, a process question. Um, clearly, the news broke about the mold situation several days ago. And there was ample time, if you will, and the ability to add this, uh, to make a, you know, a concerted decision to add this to tonight's agenda, and that was not done. Um, and, you know, so is this still considered um, an exigent situation, knowing that we had ample time prior to the agenda posting? Help me understand.
Okay, no, number one, we don't see the agenda as it's going to be posted. We see a draft. And if that draft, that draft changes, the draft changed on the motion to go into executive session in between the draft and the final one. So, uh, that doesn't hold any water. Number two, we have in the past, uh, considered and
Don't have long, are you having any? You can't hear any more? Molly, maybe you can chat in the room?
I'm very sorry. Okay, number one.
Mr. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Dowling, hold on.
Yes.
Ms. Fidger?
Thank you. This, this motion assumes that there is not going to be this report under the COVID-19 update. I would like to ask Dr. Rodriguez if he intends to bring this forward during COVID-19 update, since that has to do with schools and everything.
Yes. The answer is no.
Thank you.
Uh, point of order.
State your point.
I think that, that mold and they, and I don't think that they have, uh, I don't think, I, I don't believe that, though, I believe that those are two different issues and they are not congruent with each other because the COVID-19 is dealing with medically health with people versus a situation dealing with, dealing, uh, dealing at a school. And, and, and more than one school. I think COVID is, uh, is more of a, of a, something different versus a, a any, any financial, also other things, emergency at a school. I think those are two different issues. And, and, and it should be spelled out as, as though.
Ms. Orishak?
Yeah, I, I wanna, I agree with William here. Uh, the, the, really, the value in adding it as a defined and listed agenda item is that as we watch the progression of how it's handled over the next several months, we can go back and find an agenda uh, where we first had this discussion because it will actually be listed and named on there. Putting it under COVID, it's a very loose association. It would be tough to follow up and find, uh, initial video discussions um, and initial updates from Dr. Rodriguez that I think are valuable. So I, I would suggest we just add it as, you know, a delineated line item for future reference.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Oh, just as a point of clarification, uh, just to remind the board that the board received an update from, uh, our communications department, providing them, uh, the information ahead of time. Uh, they received that information, then in addition, uh, also received, uh, the information, I believe, about, uh, the, uh, final decision on that.
Uh, Mr. Stridinger?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I don't think it really requires a whole lot more talking. Uh, we, we have some folks that want to add it to the agenda. The superintendent has no problem with it. So I suggest we just vote on this and move on to more substantive issues.
Mr. Dowling?
Um, in response to Ms. Orishak, um, we don't see the final agenda until, until it's posted, actually. In fact, tonight's agenda was changed from the draft to the final posting. Uh, but more importantly, we have in the past allowed kind sensitive issues to be put onto an agenda. Uh, May 2019 comes to mind when we were called to, uh, dis, uninvite uh, Jay Bender from attending the finance, uh, policy committee meeting. And, uh, I know for a fact that in January of 18, uh, Dr. Wisnewski, on the morning, requested a made, uh, something be put on the meeting in terms of safety, which I supported. Safety is important. Uh, so I think the fact that people are saying, my child is going back to school, I'm a little concerned about this. I think Frank's, Dr. Rodriguez's answer is insufficient. And because we've got a press release type email, we didn't have a chance to ask questions. The public needs to know about the mold problem, not just the board. And the board has the, has the prerogative to ask questions about it. So I don't see a, a problem and I, it's put yourself in the place of the public. The, the, put yourself in the place of the public. The reason that things have to be written on the agenda is so that they know what we're going to talk about. So if somebody looked at that agenda tonight, they'd see COVID report. And they may want to know all about the mold, but they might not connect mold and COVID because they have nothing to do with each other. So just slipping it in to the, another report is, um, I won't say it's malicious, but it's, it's not proactive in informing the public about what the, this meeting is going to be all about. So let's just take a two-third vote, add it to the agenda, and then all the concern in the public about the mold, I'm sure will be satisfied by the explanation given to them by the administration.
Hello?
Did you hear that, Molly? Or, or Robin?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so voting is open for this.
I actually have my hand up.
William has his hand up.
So you can, go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Uh, I was going to be mindful of, to the board that, you know, Mrs. Orishak made a good, I agree, great point about us putting it on the, on the agenda so that if, if the question ever come up, wherever, wherever we decided to discuss it publicly, that they can go on our notes and see that it was on the agenda and that we're being transparent about it. And I think that's a, a clear message to the, our stakeholders that we're, uh, we're being trans, trans, uh, we're being transparent in what we're doing and we, and we don't mind telling them what's going on so that our stakeholders can have, uh, can keep, keep their faith, uh, for the ones that have faith in the board. Thank you.
Orishak?
Uh, just to, uh, slightly off topic. Evidently, we do not have a live feed on the county channel. Is the public being allowed in at this juncture? Is that something we need to check before we proceed?
The county channel is on.
Where can, where can this evening's meeting be viewed, Robin, for those having difficulties right now?
Um, on the county channel?
Yeah, they said, they're saying there's no live feed. Um, anyway, I just wanted to pass that along. I think it's relevant earlier in the meeting as opposed to later.
Can you hear it? Are you finding it?
Uh, I've gotten, I've, I've
Yes, Mr. Smith?
I've gotten a couple texts saying the same thing, that it's not on, that it, that it's not live. So, uh, it's, it's, it's more than, uh, I've gotten the same thing.
Yeah. On the website, I think. We're live on their site. I'm sorry. We're live on their website. I checked the alternate one, it was a mold, it was the agenda setting. So we, we've, we've been told that it's on the county channel on YouTube. For the viewers. So, Robin, could you please have this, uh, vote open?
Wait a minute.
Mr. Dowling's hands up.
Mr. Dowling?
I'd just like to say that if I was a parent with a child in school face to face, I would not want to wait two weeks until the next meeting to have this discussed. I would want to know now. Thank you.
Voting's open.
Yes.
Yes, Rob.
Yes.
Dr. Wisnewski?
Um, sorry, I gotta take down board docs.
Yes. Do you want me to, yes? Got you. Okay, so the motion carries N1. Um, the one no is Mr. Guyer. So we'll add it to the superintendent's report under other matters, just have it as a separate listing. Okay, so now we need a motion to approve the rest of the agenda. I don't think so because this was just the add. Okay, I'm sorry, you did. Sure, that's my fault. So now, you can go back to that one and zone on the, on the rest of the agenda.
Yes.
Go ahead and voting is open.
Yes.
Jolans, hands up.
Hands up.
Ms. Orishak? Yes, I'm sorry. Madam Chair, do you have any documents, I didn't see any in board docs, uh, that relate to your chairman's report this evening?
I know.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, Rob.
Colonel Guyer?
I'm going to read for him.
I mean, Earl, Campbell?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion carries N1.
Oh, excuse me.
Mr. Smith?
Robin, uh, I thought I said no. I didn't mean to stand there. Thought I had no.
Okay. The, the, the agenda, the rest of the agenda is approved N2. The two noes are Smith and Orishak. All right, now we can have the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
With liberty and justice for all.
Have a moment of silence for the family that tragically died in the accident on the McHale Bridge on September 19. Two of the deceased were Beaufort County School District students. 16-year-old Deshaun Hawkins, a 10th grader at Battery Creek High School, and six-year-old Alonso Houston, a first grader at Robert Smalls International Academy. Their mother, LaShay Keena Doe, who is pregnant with a baby girl, and their three-year-old brother, Cameron Perry, also perished. The media has been properly notified. We are now down to the points of celebration. And, uh, we need a motion for the fire. Or no, they were going to come forward and speak. I'm sorry.
So
We already approved the motion.
So, uh, good evening, everyone. Part of points of celebration this evening. Important to note that in times of crisis, it's more important than ever to be surrounded by and to provide a collaborative community of support. Tonight, I'd like to thank one of our community supporters, Ryan Marks and his staff at Fire and Pine for their generous donation of 7,000 face shields. Uh, nurses, bed students, and any students who have been granted a medical accommodation to not use a mask will be able to use the face shield. During this time of uncertainty, we are comforted, encouraged, and humbled by the generosity and support from our community. Mr. Marks is, uh, with us this evening via Zoom. Mr. Marks, uh, do you have, uh, any words you'd like to share this evening?
Uh, no, I just want to thank you for, uh, for acknowledging that, you know, we're just trying to do our part. You know, it's, uh, during this trying time, you know, we just all need to have the community come together. I know it's a very divisive time right now. But, um, you know, you know, I thank all of you board members for everything you do and all the time you spend, um, you know, volunteering your hours on this. But, uh, but yeah, look, you know, we're just, we're a small business. Uh, we, we love our community. Anything we can do to, to help, especially, you know, our frontline workers in the, in the school system, you know, teachers, bus drivers, janitorial staff, uh, really anybody, you know, so we're just glad that we can help and, uh, you know, anything that you guys, you know, need that we can help in the future, please just let us know.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right, we're now down to the first public comment.
No, this is Molly calling you for public comments. Can you please speak your name?
Can you please speak your name?
Uh, yeah, Molly, it's on television right now. The court meeting did not be telecast on the county channel.
The county channel is live on YouTube.
The county channel is live on YouTube, so it's...
Their alternate channel. Is their alternate channel is live.
Okay.
Can everyone hear him?
Yeah.
Can everyone on Zoom hear him?
Yes.
Yes, he is.
3 minutes, Tony.
Good evening, this is Tony Gabriel. Hope all of you are well. Just a rhetorical question. Is the tail wagging the dog or the dog wagging the tail? It's totally different, might be a nice soundbite. But it could also describe the school culture that disregards coherence, collaborative, and systemic learning plans. The multiple school plants seem to be lacking coordination, sense of accountability. Perhaps one related by a comfort level, convenience, and ideology, rather than developed by science, best practices, guidance from systemic, formulated... Which best practice model utilize to develop the hybrid model for our schools? Where are any shares that don't come with intended help to save casualties? Coupled with a widening in the achievement gap, further eroding confidence trust. Critics base data emotions into being irrationality, determining the fact it's essential for academic success, while also having to provide safety in office during these challenging times. For any examples? Here's the science, which is now recording students and staff in private rooms in schools. Ironically, every football player and coach's temperature is recorded before participation. Is a non-football player or non-coach's system different? How does 20% executive induction in face instruction align with the goals maximizing students' needs most at risk? What cleaning plan requires within 16 hours of inspecting a building with less than 30% items? Board members, why don't you consider maintaining pressure and temperature recordings for everyone entering the school facilities? Why does it all have to be treated between face instruction? Require a plan that can clean and inspect a building in 16 hours or less? This is the time to put everything on the table. Let's start with how to explore and find school safety. You are bound by moral ethical legal obligations and mandates to ask questions. Advant back through the data, control budget allocation, where you're sure everybody in excellent for all students regardless of difficulties. How will this affect and this schools look alike? Or look different, you measure. How will we measure which school is effective and how we can compare? Thank you for your service, and we should look moving forward.
Thank you, Johnny. That's everyone. Okay.
Now, Jeff, the only public comment, yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're now down to the chairman's report. The first is the update on the forensic audit. And this, to give the public background, the board has had multiple votes on this topic, starting as early as June and going through last month. And we've also had at least one special meeting, several special meetings, actually. So, the board initially approved the scope of work and the maximum price of the engagement back in June. The board then approved the firm to do the audit. And that firm, there were four firms, and the firm, the board chose, all of them provided documentation materials with contract information in them. And then, the board voted to have an attorney negotiate the contract with the firm that was chosen. And I was asked to arrange for that. And it was chosen by the board to have a particular law firm, Haynesworth Sinclair Boyd. And that law firm, there was a letter of engagement signed for their work to do the contract or a letter of agreement with the audit firm that was chosen by the board. And Ms. Kathy Grobey signed that letter of engagement, because I was unreachable in terms of I was out of state and not where I had actually internet service. So I could not sign it electronically. And then, once that was signed, the attorney for Haynesworth Sinclair Boyd, whose name is Mr. John Arthur, proceeded with the letter of agreement with the chosen audit firm, which is JAG. And I probably won't pronounce it correctly. I think it's Garimillo, Garimillo Auditting Firm. And the attorney, she said that it was a very basic basic contract that they provided. And there was nothing of substance that he felt was changed or that he wanted to change, other than that the contract would be between the Board of Education and the auditing firm, not between the district and the auditing firm. In addition, the RFQ was posted, as we know, on the board, on the district's website as part of the procurement process. And the board approved what was posted there. And so that was also used in terms of developing the contract. So the terms of the contract were previously decided on multiple occasions by the board. And so that letter of agreement was signed late September. And the board wanted the work done in 30 days, indicating a desire to proceed expeditiously. And so the completion of the audit should be later this month. The staff, both the finance department, our financial advisor, Molly, our executive assistant to our executive assistant, Robin, have worked diligently to provide lots and lots of documents, financial documents, which have to be loaded into their portal. And those have been completed, although they have occasionally asked for additional information that's been provided very promptly. In addition, the, both the letter of agreement that was signed with the attorney or a letter of engagement, and the letter of agreement that was signed with the JAG Consulting Company, yes, those are public documents. They are going, I know, I think they might already be on the district website, because the other firms get to see those documents. So that's my update on the forensic audit.
Madam Chair, point of order. Can we ask a question about your report?
Yes, sir.
How can you justify signing a contract without showing it to the board when it was the board who voted it? That is not within the purview of the chair.
Well, I thought I outlined that well in my presentation, sir. The will...
You didn't outline it at all. You said that the terms were communicated in pieces, different things along the way. But the board did not get to see the final product. And I am, I take umbrage at the fact that the board was not asked to okay that contract before it was signed and committed to for the board.
Well, sir, the motion on September 2nd did not say that the contract had to come back to the board for final approval. As I already said, the scope of work approved, the maximum price was approved. That company had already provided a document to us for what they were going to do. And the, as the attorney said, it was a boilerplate contract. He didn't advise me. I referred him to all the motions that had been passed by the board. I referred him to the RFQ. And he did not advise that it needed to come back to the board. He would have, I guess, he would reasonably assume all that approval had already come through the board. That the...
With all due respect, Madam Chair, it is not an attorney's job to say whether something should come back to the board. Common sense says that as our leader, you should show us what you're committing to, the final product. What changed? Did anything change? I don't know, because I didn't see it. You really overreached.
I just said what changed. I said that the contract was...
You didn't let us see the contract. You screwed up.
I respectfully disagree with your analysis.
Good. I imagine that you would.
Ms. Orshak?
Yes, Madam Chair, I do have a statement that I would like to read. But before I begin that statement, and I would like it read into the minute, Mrs. Pushingberry, I will give that to you after the meeting. One of the areas that, when the board was speaking directly with the firms, was communication. And how communication with the firm, the auditing firm, would take place as the audit progresses? Would it go primarily through the chair? And then the chair would have to trickle it down? Would it go to the full board? And I know that that was one of the areas that I know I certainly wanted to weigh in on with the final agreement with them before they began their work. Of course, we didn't have that opportunity. But can you just speak to that for a moment? Can you let us know, before I begin my statement, what that line of communication will be over the next 30 days or during the process of the audit?
I don't have the final agreement in front of me, but it's definitely covered on there as to that they're going to give a report, as I recall, is what it says. And they are communicating with the board through myself, Molly, and Robin. And that is the mode of communication. Mr. John Arthur, the attorney, is not involved with each of those communications, because the board's directive was that he only negotiate the contract. And so, I specifically had an email with him, and the JAG people, that we would only contact him if we felt he was needed again. Because obviously, if he's copied on every single correspondence, when they're asking for all these documents, that's going to get very, very expensive. So it is addressed there, and you have a copy of it. So maybe you have it right in front of you. I don't have it right in front of me right now.
I did request a copy. If I may begin with my statement regarding this item. I'm making this statement because it's very important that this process be seamless. We don't want the public or anyone to question how this forensic audit went. We want it to appear and present to folks that the process went smoothly. Okay, just so that folks have a little background into Mr. Dowling's, and frankly, some of my frustrations, I read the following statement into the minute. Madam Chair, on September 2nd, the board took action on the following. Motion to engage the services of Haynesworth Sinclair Boyd to negotiate the contract with the firm C. Now, of course, firm C is the auditing firm. The motion was made by Mr. Dowling. I seconded, and the final resolution was approved. It says here, it was, it looks like 10 board members voted in support of it. I think one may be absent. The board was last updated on this issue on September 15th at our meeting in your chair report. And at that time, you said that Haynesworth Sinclair Boyd is negotiating the agreement. No information has been given to the board since that time until this evening. Yesterday, I requested a copy of any, if there were any, signed agreements with firm C, JAG, fully anticipating to be presented with a draft for review in executive session with the full board. I was taken back to be given a signed agreement by you on September 21st, which was roughly 15 days ago. Okay. Who knew? Questions? Why was the full board not notified of the signed public document on September 21st, the same day you signed it? Two, was the board required to view and vote on the agreement, first, since the board is hiring the audit firm? Three, did the law firm, Haynesworth Sinclair Boyd, recommend the chair show the agreement to the board first before signing it? If so, why was that not done? I request the Haynesworth Sinclair Boyd invoices for services per this matter for full board review. And it is important to note that, as a side note, that the letter, the agreement letter, was first sent on September 9th, but not signed by Dr. Guadz until the 21st of September. Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment about this, saying that I interpreted the motion to mean the green light to get her done. When Mr. Becker presented his findings, the board decided that a financial audit needed to be done. And it seemed to be something that needed to be done quickly. The board discussed it, placed a time, 30 days, a price cap on it, and decided on the firm. So, my interpretation of that motion was to tell the chair to get her done.
Did you get it, Jim? Am muted.
Disregard everything I said. I had the same interpretation Ms. Fidrich had. I think if we wanted it to be brought back to the board, we should have amended that motion, and then there wouldn't have been any confusion. So, given the motion we made, I think a reasonable person would assume that the task was to get the contract done, after, you know, reviewed by a legal expert and get it done. Because there is a time sensitivity getting this audit completed. Thank you.
Yes, I agree with Ms. Fidrich and Mr. Strivenger. We hired an attorney to make sure that it was done appropriately. We set clear guidelines, clear parameters for the contract to be written. Again, the timing of the essence was what I took away from our meetings and our conversations. So, you know, I think that the chair did what he asked her to do.
Anybody else like to speak to the husband's stuff? Ms. Orshak? Mr. Okeem Oliver, go first.
I would just say that when we both start talking about this, we say that we do this soon as possible. And we had that assumption right now, so, you know, we may have agreed. If what happened, let's move on. Get it.
Ms. Orshak? You're muted.
Okay. I think assumptions were made on several of our parts. For me, it was an obvious assumption that after the attorney negotiated the contract, we would just get a peek out... we would just get a peek at the draft in executive session, you know, give it a thumbs up or thumbs down when we come out. I anticipated it being on the executive session agenda tonight. So I was surprised to not find it, you know, in our packet and that it had already been signed on September 21st. Again, I really wanted to weigh in on the communication piece. I wanted the full board to be in contact. All the time, Madam Chair, with all due respect, things do not trickle down from you to the full board, perhaps some members, but not the full board. And in this particular instance, I wanted to keep a close eye and I wanted to be in the loop. And the only way to ensure that in the current environment is to put it in a contract. So that's just one of the areas I would have liked to have weighed in on. I know it was discussed that we would have some input on it. The time crunch is not that significant at this point in time. I don't even know how far along they are in their work. If you signed this thing back on September 21st, where are we even? Okay, I just, I just think so much of this happened without the board's knowledge. Even just a simple courtesy, even if you believe as Tricia and Dick, and, excuse me, not Dick, David, believed that that was assumed, you were going to go ahead and sign it. How about just a simple courtesy? Board members, I signed the contract today. It's done. It's a public document. Done. But that didn't happen. So I feel completely out of the loop at this time. I'm concerned, frankly, about it. And I'm not certain how much information I'm going to receive as a board member about this audit as it progresses. So those are my thoughts for what they were.
Mr. Smith?
First, let me start out by saying I do tend to agree with Mrs. Fidrich and as well as Mr. Strivenger. But my logical thinking is that we've had, like you stated, you stated when we first started that we've had several special call meetings. We could have had a special call meeting allowing us to know that, hey, the contract is ready, let's look at the contract, and this is what the contract is and this is what it states. And we've talked to the attorney and this is what the attorney has advised us. You know, yeah, we might wanted it to be done. But the thing about it is, if we've called special, we've obviously called special meetings in reference to this and past practice, then why can't we call a special meeting once we actually got the contract? You know, and I'm just, I'm kind of taken back, you know, I'm shocked as an officer to see this. And, you know, and to also find out that Mrs. Robine signed the paper, I would at least thought that, you know, that maybe you or Mrs. Robine would have gave me a heads up or even a little, hey, look, little Will, the contract's in, we're going to sign it, Mrs. Robine's going to sign it. You know, as an officer, at least be kept in the loop. You know, I'm concerned and there were things that I wanted to ask questions about the final, the final, the final product. Because we have had in our past practices, here recently, we have had some frozen contracts. So, you know, I would have loved to see the final product. And it concerns me as well, you know. I just was hoping that, you know, in the future, that, you know, that when the board presents something like this and this is what we're going to do as officers or as board members, that we keep each other looking and that that would just let me know. I mean, I'm only, I said I'm only one vote, but.
Mr. Dowling?
I- I'm done now. Thanks for that, John. I'm done now. You're there, Mr. Dowling. Thank you, respectfully.
Memories are short. We're coming off the heels of the K-12 contract fiasco. And tonight, we're discussing a custodial contract that we rejected a vote on two weeks ago because it was presented to us not complete enough to be able to take a vote. So we have to look at contracts that spend other people's money to see if they're okay. And we didn't get to do it. As Ms. Orshak says, it was at the minimum a courtesy. At the most, it should have been required and says a lot to me about attitude. Thank you.
I'd just like to clarify something. Mr. Smith, I didn't sign the contract. I didn't see it. What I signed was the letter of engagement with the attorney and that was reported at another meeting. I signed it because Dr. Guadz was on it. So that, but that was previously, I didn't sign the contract. I didn't see the contract. The letter, I assumed the letter of engagement.
Mr. Smith?
Well, thank you for clarifying that, Mrs. Robine. But like I said, I didn't even know that you signed that. I mean, I was all ears, but I was not, I was not under any knowledge that you even signed that, you know. I mean, I just thought that we were having teamwork and that, you know, we were all in this thing together, but that's all. I mean, thank you.
All right. The next item on the chair report is the superintendent's evaluation, which Robin and Molly have already contacted the board members for a special call executive session for the evaluation, which will be on October 29th, beginning at 4:30 p.m. So there's a timeline prior to that actual executive session. On October 16th, the board members will have received the evaluation instrument. On October 20th, the board members will receive the superintendent's self-evaluation and his report for the evaluation. On October 27th, by 12:00 noon Eastern Standard Time, the board members' evaluations will be due. So they can be tallied prior to the October 29th special call executive session. Ms. Orshak?
Madam Chair, the last time, we had the 90-day evaluation, which is, you know, considerably less formal than this one. We were not permitted to keep Dr. Rodriguez's packet, if you will, his responses, his self-evaluation for the actual executive sessions where we were reviewing performance. So this time around, I move, I'm going to do it formally action, I move the board be permitted to have Dr. Rodriguez's self-evaluation for the executive sessions where the board evaluates him.
Check them.
And if I may speak to the motion as the maker. It was very difficult to recall some of the suggestions and the items that Dr. Rodriguez had, you know, very appropriately put forward, detailing his successes and so on and so forth. It would have been very handy to have that as, you know, as we could speak to excellent points or areas that, you know, perhaps we weren't aware of. So it would be a really good reference point to have that in with us this time round.
So, Robin, can you put the motion up on the screen?
Joanne, will you please repeat your motion again? You moved that.
All right. I move that, and I don't know if I'm going to get this exact, Robin. I move that the board retain Dr. Rodriguez's self-evaluation for the board's executive sessions superintendent evaluation.
I move that the board retain Dr. Rodriguez's self-evaluation for the board's executive session superintendent's evaluation.
Excellent. And then we can always hand them back immediately following for security purposes.
And who seconded that motion?
I did.
Thank you. Madam Chair, with your permission, may I ask Ms. Fidrich a question? Ms. Orshak, before we go on this, can you walk through the steps of what you're suggesting here? And Dr. Rodriguez, you know, first of all, my heart's go out to everybody that wears these all day long, teacher, teachers, I feel like I'm yelling and I don't mean to. So, Ms. Orshak, would you walk through the steps of what your motion means?
So, at the 90-day evaluation, we were required to hand back, and I don't know who made that requirement, no idea. The board was required to hand back in, prior to those executive sessions, Dr. Rodriguez's self-evaluation. And when I got into those executive sessions, I know I wanted to refer back to very specific verbiage that was in there. You know, promises that he had fulfilled, for example. And I could not do that without the document in front of me. I also, there were also instances where, you know, maybe A or B was not met. But without that document in front of me, you know, I couldn't verify that. So there was a lot of information in there that was beyond, above and beyond, much more thorough than the instrument in front of the board. And to be able to speak to that clearly, I think you need it with you in executive session. I was at a loss without it. I wasn't sure what the thinking was in not permitting us to have it. But perhaps we can do things differently this time round.
Okay, so you're just suggesting that the document that has some confidential information in it for us to review it during the evaluation, but you're-
In the session.
Right, but I know last time, there was some concern that confidential information was not brought back and returned on time. And I want to make sure that what you're saying is that confidential information will be turned in at the end of that executive session.
Well, if you want to amend my motion to include that, you're certainly welcome to. My intent is that we simply have access to it, Trish. As far as returning procedures, I don't really, I didn't have an issue with that. So, but if you want, you can amend the motion to include that. That's up to you. I just want to have that document in front of me and be able to speak to it with the board and Dr. Rodriguez in executive session. That's it.
Okay, so when are we getting that self-evaluation?
October 20th.
October 20th, and we're meeting on the 29th?
Correct.
Okay, so.
Excuse me, you said that we're getting that evaluation, the, you said we're getting it from Dr. Rodriguez on when?
October 20th.
You said the 20th?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And we keep it confidential until the 29th, at which time we would keep it with us and then turn it back in?
Yes. Why don't you just amend the motion?
Well, I mean, I think that's what that say.
Well.
Point of order, point of order. Point of order.
Just a minute.
Joanne, isn't that what you're saying?
Well, I made the motion, it was seconded, and it did not include-
No, point of order, point of order.
Why did it not include comment?
Point of order.
What's your point? State your point.
My point is that it sounds like it's though the chair is coaching. When you ask someone, do they want to make a motion? Or you say, no, you said, excuse me, you said, why don't you go ahead and make that a motion? It seems like you're coaching someone. I think that we are all capable to make our own decisions. If we want to make a motion or if we want to amend it, I think that we're intelligent enough to do so. I just think that there are times when the chair coaches or the chairs refer, basically, refer to people to make motions is out of order.
So, Mr. Smith, I'll respond to that. Because Helen McFadden, the parliamentarian that was extremely experienced, she specifically said to do that, to try to make the motions very specific. And maybe if we had the motion on September 2nd regarding the forensic audit, saying bring it back to the next executive session after it's signed, we wouldn't have had the discussion we had tonight. So that's all I'm saying. If there's concern about returning it, that says nothing about, that just says retaining it. It doesn't say anything about returning it.
But, Madam Chair, I understand that. But we can't pick and choose when we advise people, we ask people, do they want to make a motion? We can't pick and choose, we can't pick and choose and do that when it's convenient for us. That's my whole point. If you do it when other people talk or when other things are being done, then that's understandable. We just can't do it when it's convenient for us. That's all. Thank you.
So, Mr. Smith, I want to just respond to that. That I appreciate when Ms. Orshak asked me if I wanted to amend her motion. So I appreciated that coaching from Ms. Orshak because I was trying to get a clarity as to what exactly the motion meant. So I think if we say that I move that the board retain Dr. Rodriguez's self-evaluation until the board's executive session of the superintendent's evaluation and will then be turned in at the conclusion of that session. I stop.
Okay, so.
I know that was moving, but I just think we need it all in there to show the process.
Will you state it again? I move that the board retains the self-evaluation.
Until the board's executive session or the superintendent's evaluation. At the conclusion of that executive session, all copies of Dr. Rodriguez's self-evaluation will be returned.
Can I help with that?
Yes, John, please.
How about I move that the board return Dr. Rodriguez's self-evaluation immediately upon conclusion of the executive session?
Joanne, does that get to the heart of your matter?
Indeed, it is. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I was in the middle of typing something else. So, John, would you like it to say now?
I move that the board return Dr. Rodriguez's self-evaluation immediately upon conclusion of the executive session discussing his evaluation.
Move that the board return.
Thank you all. I understand the process a lot better.
I move that the board return Dr. Rodriguez's self-evaluation at the conclusion of the executive session superintendent's evaluation.
The word immediately.
I'm sorry?
Immediately was in there. Mr. Dowling used the word immediately.
Turned.
I move that the board return immediately. There was Tricia and Mr. Dowling?
Oh, sure.
I hate to tell you, the top there is, you've got the ad hoc self-evaluation committee. This is really under the-
Oh, sorry, I have it in the wrong place. I'll move it once we get this saved. Is that it?
That's it.
It's not exactly what you said. Did you hear that, Tricia?
I did, but I think it says the same, it says the same.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Dowling?
What? Oh. I'd just like to make a comment. If I recall correctly, there was absolutely nothing in Dr. Rodriguez's self-evaluation last year that could possibly be construed as confidential. in Dr. Rodriguez's self-evaluation last year that could possibly be construed as confidential. A list of the superintendent's accomplishments is hardly fodder for confidentiality since he's a public official. So I just, we shouldn't be too concerned about members treating the information as though they've been given the nuclear launch codes. Thank you.
My question is this. Once we give that document back, where would that document be filed? Be filed, or where would that document be just in case we want to look on it and see something that he's put in there? If we want to self-check, let's say for instance, we want to self-check it at a month, a month from that point in time? Would we be allowed to go somewhere and read that document or what? Because that's, I mean, that's a concern of mine as well.
So Dr. Rodriguez, well, I can tell, so William, just a general answer would be that, you know, that's his work product. So I think it's what he does with that work product. It's his individual product. The board's evaluation is what the board as a whole evaluates it as, not each individual's evaluation. So I don't know, Dr. Rodriguez, how would you, what would you say to how to answer that?
I don't know right now.
What would the, what would the district's councils against? Sorry, do you agree?
And here him.
So why don't we let Dr. Rodriguez contemplate what he thinks would be that's the individual's product, but it's something that the board is using for its evaluation and let us know?
Madam Chair, I strongly have a concern because of the fact that it is his product, but it's the work of the district. And once again, if he's a public official, then that is not, to me, to my sense, that is kind of not private because if a teacher's evaluation is, can be FOIA'd, and it's public information, then can we get some clarity on what's the difference between the superintendents who represents the district? What's the difference between his information and a teacher's? Because that's a serious concern that that if he's giving something out to the board and it doesn't want to be, when that, the not, and he does not want the the public to see that, that's not a good, to me, that is a not a good element of transparency here. And that is a concern of mine. I like, I too agree with John Dowling. There was, I don't see where there was nothing that was really so classified in the last document that the public could not see because basically it was more of, we were praising for what he was, what he has accomplished since he's been here. And I don't see why we would not want the public to know that and to be to be satisfactory along with us, him on that. So that kind of, that's disturbing to me. And I'm wondering, is that a past practice or how did we get to this? Where did that decision come from?
Mr. Earl Campbell?
That was a question, that was a question to you, Madam Chair. The question was, how did we get to returning these documents? Is it a past practice or that's something that just started this year? Because now I'm a new board member, so I'm trying to understand the procedures and the policies.
Well, you've been on the board nearly two years. And when I contacted, and I announced this publicly, Mr. Smith, when I contacted the South Carolina School Board Association attorney, Scott Price, as to what should be done, what was public and what wasn't with these evaluations that we did at 90 days, he told me that the individual products of each person, you know, was their own work product. And then that the only thing that was public was the compilation of the total score. And so that is what was released to the public. That is the advice we got from the South Carolina School Board Association legal counsel. That, you know, was not my decision by itself or anything like that. That was what they advised us to do, and that was what we followed, and that was presented to the board.
And for the record, who was Scott Price?
I think his title is Executive Director of the South Carolina School Board Association. He is an attorney. And we're a member of the South Carolina School Board Association. And as part of that membership, we have access to legal advice as part of it, no charge. So that is why I went there. Now. Mr. Campbell?
Yeah, I was under the impression that part of the process of evaluating was to have Dr. Rodriguez submit a self-evaluation. That was part of the process of getting to the full evaluation from the board, which meant that when he submitted his self-evaluation, it becomes the purview of the board. Whatever we want to do with that is up to us as opposed to his individual product. Because that's, that was one of our requirements of him in terms of the evaluation process. And, you know, I don't see why we can't have that document stored, to Will's question. I don't know what, you know, what damage it would do under any circumstances. Even after the evaluation is done, we need to have that record stored also. But I don't, you know, by and to that, it ever says, his individual document and his, he has the rights to hold on to all of the information there. Once we acquired that of him and he agreed to it, then that becomes a part of our, you know, document, you know, accumulation also. That's my opinion.
Is this good again?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The 90-day evaluation, I think, was different from the annual one. The 90-day evaluation, we asked him to assess his team. And I believe that was the confidentiality piece. I don't think we're going to have that issue with the annual. But absent another legal interpretation, I would go with what Scott Price told us. Because he's the only one with a law degree who we're talking about here. For another, another opinion. But the 90-day, we did ask for a confidential assessment of the staff. And so I think that was the confidential piece in the 90-day.
Mr. Dowling?
Words are important. I'd just like to correct a couple of misnomers. Scott Price is not the legal counsel of the School Board Association. Tiffany Richardson is. That's number one. Number two, Dr. Rodriguez is not an attorney. What he does is not his work product. Work product refers to attorneys only. No one else can have a legal claim that what I did is my work product. It's my opinion that anything that Dr. Rodriguez submits for his evaluation goes in his personnel file at the minimum. But let's call things what they really are and not lead people to believe that the superintendent has the same protection as an attorney does about what they produce in writing. Thank you.
Earl Campbell? You're muted.
I'm done. I, you know, I agree with John. That belongs in our files as a district, whatever Dr. Rodriguez submits to us. I don't, I don't care what the attorney say in terms of that. That's just, that's just basic rules and regulations. If he submits it to us because we required it, then we can have it in our files. I don't need to be an attorney.
Mr. Smith?
I'm with Mr. Scribiger. I would like to, well, I would like to possibly move that we get an attorney's general opinion or that we get another form of opinion on this.
Mr. Speaker, Dr. Rodriguez?
Let me save you some money and let me save the taxpayer some money, okay? Rather than going out and getting another opinion on this, okay? It's fine. Keep a copy of that document in my personal file.
Go ahead.
Ms. Orshak?
William, I have a comment. I'll second your motion for discussion, but I just have a comment. First of all, there would be no charge, obviously, for an attorney general opinion. But I'm not going to vote yes, William, because this board has very little respect for attorney general opinions. So what would be the point? What was the motion?
There is a one.
Okay.
I don't know what seconded.
I seconded it for discussion. So what was the motion again?
Mr. Smith, what's your motion?
You're muted.
The motion was to get an attorney general's opinion on the situation.
Ms. Orshak seconded. Any further discussion on that? Mr. Scribiger?
Madam Chair, do we have a motion on the floor already?
Yes.
So I'm not sure how we can have another motion before we dispose of that first one. Unless this is a substitute, and it doesn't sound like it's a substitute.
Correct.
So I would suggest we dispose of the first motion and then take up this motion.
All right, let's have a vote on this one. If it's, are you going to fix it, Robin, right, then it's going to go under on a different heading?
Hold on a second. All right. It's under, it's fixed. I move that the board return immediately. So that's the motion we're voting on, correct?
Yes.
All right, it's open.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Dr. Winansky?
Yes, it's not my board.
All right, the motion carries unanimously. Now, Mr. Smith, would you like to have your motion on the floor?
Yes, I would.
Okay. So stay in for Robin.
I move that the board retains, I mean, I move that the board has access for the AG's opinion on this process.
And Ms. Orshak seconded. Mr. Dowling?
I agree with Ms. Orshak. The board doesn't pay any attention to attorney general's opinion, so what's the point? Save the taxpayers some money.
That's right, but okay.
All right, voting is open.
I withdraw the motion.
Okay, once it's on there though, remember we need a majority.
That's fine, that's fine, we can go ahead, that's fine, we can go ahead and push it through, that's fine.
A vote to withdraw it.
That's fine, we can just keep it.
Okay.
Voting is open.
Thank you.
No. No, no, no.
Mr. Earl Campbell?
No.
I think it came up online, didn't it?
Oh, what do you want your vote to be?
No. The motion fails, one ten, the one yes is, Mr. Smith? All right. That concludes the superintendent's evaluation discussion. We're now down to the approval of the minutes, the September 15th, 2020 board meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
No, that the September 15th, 2020 board meeting minutes or something?
Okay, Mr. Scribiger seconded. Ms. Robine?
I'm just going to make the vote.
Okay. Any discussion? Are your voting is open?
Mr. Dowling? Ms. Robine?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Dowling's not in. Do you want me close to vote or wait?
I think we're probably, I mean, he's knocked out of the system or?
No, he stepped away from his screen.
Okay, well, go ahead.
Voting's closed.
Dowling did not pass the vote. All right, we're now down to the committee reports. Academic Committee, Fisher Figgich?
Thank you, Dr. Boss. The academic committee met on September 14th and received a presentation by Dr. Niamh Campbell and Dr. Stratos on PE 1.2. PE 1.2 reads, "Teachers will participate in collaborative learning communities and other professional learning to improve instruction and student learning." It had a lengthy report, but the committee had multiple questions and asked Dr. Stratos and Dr. Campbell to bring back a little bit more information at our next meeting, which will be October 21st. So we do not have PE 1.2 to bring to the board today. That concludes my report.
Thank you. The ADHOC London Growth Committee, Dr. Winansky?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, the ADHOC London Growth Committee met on September 24th. And our next meeting on October 22nd. There was discussion regarding the cost of mobiles, and we had some questions for senior staff about that. One of the reports that we did receive is that we presently have approximately 55 modulars throughout the district. We're looking to obtain some more information about the average age of the fleet of the modulars. You know, insurance costs, if that's more or less than a regular site, as well as some other information that the committee requested. Additionally, we discussed enrollment numbers and projections. Ms. Carol Pratchfield had some information that she reported to the committee that we reviewed regarding different grade levels and the projections from those grade levels within the districts. I anticipate that I will be giving a rather large interim report after we receive the 45-day numbers from the district, which is after November 10th. Additionally, we discussed sending of the books. The books are ready to be distributed, but we do have a couple races elect officials that are contested races. So we are going to hold back those just for now until those races are complete on November 3rd. Lastly, we are going to be reaching out to the Realtors Association. I sent an email regarding that to get some feedback from them about what they see as their insights and projections for London Growth, as well as, you know, their COVID insights and that might affect them. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. The ADHOC Self-Evaluation Committee, Dr. Mel Campbell?
Okay, good evening. ADHOC Self-Evaluation Committee met twice, uh, September fourteenth and September twenty fifth. And our task was develop, was to develop an instrument for board self-evaluation or board effectiveness. One of the, one of the things we did in our first meeting was to decide what the process would be. And, uh, developing the process required, first of all, defining what effective boards were. So we decided to have each board member submit a definition, their own definition of what they thought was an effective board. And, uh, we gleaned from that some constant terms, resounding terms, sample goals and process. Strategic planning, policy adhering to the statute, et cetera. And so from that point, we looked at the resources that we had already had on hand, which some of it was board self-evaluation, uh, resources from the past and other board, you know, use, uh, local, local boards around the area, the valuation process they use. So we decided to, to include all of these particular resounding items as we vet the particular items in these, in this, uh, in these evaluation forms. Uh, what we have decided is that we're going to have something of a survey with a five multi-choice selection. And that selection will, you know, be the typical, uh, very good to, good to, average to poor to not acceptable, something of the sort. We haven't decided exactly the, the verbiage yet. But, uh, our, our committee is, is, is tested with, you know, vetting a number of the questions and how it relates to our board effectiveness. So it's going to take a while before we bring something to the board for action. I'd suggest we probably want to have something for action until December. But, uh, our, uh, question as we go forward would be, you know, some intermediate questions on the board's direction as we see, we see it. But today, that's about all that we have to report. Are there any questions?
I don't think so, but thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Thank you. Superintendent's report this evening, we will start on our student achievement goal number one with a virtual update. Dr. Stratos?
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez, and board members. Board members, doing time regarding teachers are being divided with a variety of resources. Access is predominantly online. Digital resources, digital resources have been aligned with units of study by standards. Additionally, the state adopted resources for elementary have been, have been out of date from twenty eleven. We are working with essential work units, integrating the essential standards that have been pushed out from the state and doing that alignment into Rubicon. All elementary schools will be receiving writing units of study. And again, this is all being updated to digital resources. Our middle schools have the current literature adoption collections, and again, I will share them. We have been putting significant amount of time of updating the collections, access for our teachers on Rubicon and doing alignment with the state release of the essential standards. As I continue, middle schools also have access to standards aligned and updated and updates in edginess. Units of study for our students and they can push out electronically. And this connection has been put through Rubicon. And I'd like to add that our most recent textbook adopters have been aligned as well in the area of math and the accessibility for our teachers, we've been able to get electronic links. So on the platform teaching, I can pull up, fill up my resource of software, but also I can have my textbook pulled up simultaneously as I'm working. So we're trying to do a greater job of integration. A primary instructional approach that we are utilizing focuses on the gradual release and responsibility basically of the pushing out as there are teachers are IDU. We do model that goes from direct instruction to a small group language that is also available in our reopening plan. PCSD E-learning documents that we have developed also provides teachers with grade level electronic resources as well as information for best practices for virtual learning and virtual formats. We've actually aligned some lessons and provide suggested time, best practice for students, but amount of time that they should be online. I want to provide that as we have been working on realignment of our standards and resources for our teachers. Special thanks goes out to our instructional coaches, both literacy and numeracy. I'd like to put a thank you out to Dr. Dora Ledger from Hilton Head High School. She has done a significant job working with our new math and science coordinator and assisted with the alignment in Rubicon. She has a history of working with written writing. A few points on science. Science is being reassessed to ensure teachers and students are being offered the best teacher and learning opportunities. That are reviewing options for implementation of the new integrated curriculum. And we're looking at realigning our science labs kits so that we can create greater accessibility for our teachers and for our students to see application of science. In the area of math, one of the guidance that did digital resources again have been, been realigned um, by standards in Rubicon and updated Rubicon template is also being created. Units of study to make it easier for our teachers and that consistency. So that I go from one grade to another, we're trying to provide consistency to teachers so they don't have a learning curve and navigating in the platform. It is also important to note that all student documents first focus upon students and then the element of the resources that's for teaching and learning is paramount for those who are working on this program. Thank you for your time.
Guyer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Stratus, have we received data yet?
I do apologize, sir.
Have we received now?
A map data. So that is a point of conversation that will come up. We just have preliminary data at this time, Mr. Guyer. Um, we are finalizing the implementation of that, subject to incidents outside of our region on the West Coast. But the fires, I will share that the testing window can continue through October fifteen. We will have a final, um, presentation to the board by the twentieth board meeting.
Robine?
Yes, how many teachers do you have in a teaching?
Yeah, I do not have that number with me, but I could ask this school for that information.
I'm just curious now that, you know, we've gone to hybrid. Really?
Yeah, I do not have that.
This can become as Robine speak up. Can I have that question, please?
I, I asked. Virtually.
Your mic, your mic was breaking, was broken up.
I don't know. Um. So William, my question was, how many teachers are teaching virtually?
Thank you.
I remember, just to add to that, I remember, um, Alice Walton at the last meeting saying, I believe it was like a hundred and sixty something teachers had requested accommodations to get virtually. And they had granted, and they have to have a medical reason, primarily for these. They had granted, I believe, it was like a hundred and thirty one. It was pretty, pretty close to the number that had requested it. But now maybe they're more than that. I don't know.
Yeah, in addition, that schools have asked teachers to volunteer and something gets a couple or two more pair to lead. So outside the accommodations, I don't have the full numbers. But I may note that this is real.
Thank you. Ms. Figg?
Thank you. Um, Dr. Stratus, has the state decided on the end of the year testing year? Will that happen?
For this coming for the twenty twenty one? At this time, we have not received any notification of waivers being approved by state level, submitted to the federal government, deeply said they are not approving state waivers.
Okay. The state has, uh, followed through, uh, on submitting waivers to the federal government. So, uh, they just don't have the results on their waivers.
Okay, so, um, but let's say that there will be state testing. Will that state testing be reflective of these essential standards? So are they reworking the, the, the state testing so that it just phones right in on the essential standards? Or is it going to be pretty much the same? I, I, this might control them, why not?
I was, I was, I think I know where you're going. I was at a superintendent meeting, uh, last week, I think it was, with, uh, with, um, the State Board of Education's report at that meeting indicated that they're looking at all of that. They, they have no final information on that. But they, um, they did talk about their work around the essential standards. Um, but they didn't say if that's the only thing assessed or not, right? So they're still working through that.
Okay.
And while they have already submitted or submitting a waiver to the federal.
I, I think these essential standards, um, are very important, especially once the map data comes in, that shows whether there was loss. You know, we anticipate there will be from the spring, you know, the typical summer loss and so on. So if teachers knew that the essential standards were that which are going to be assessed, it would just be, I take, makes a lot of sense. So if you could keep a surprise.
I will.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So, um, Alice Walton can answer, um, Dr. Robine's question now. Go ahead, Alice.
Good afternoon, board members. We.
Good afternoon.
You are correct, Madam Chair. We did approve a hundred and thirty one, a hundred and thirty three applications for accommodations. But we also have to realize that there are virtual teachers that were assigned to be virtual teachers that are not under any accommodations. So it, there are more than a hundred and thirty one. I don't have the exact number because principals assign virtual teachers in their building as they see fit. So they, they will have some with accommodations and some without accommodations.
Thank you. Mr. Mel Campbell?
Yeah, um, this is, I guess, directed to Dr. Stratus or Dr. Rodriguez. Uh, how are we going to determine where we are from the map data? I mean, what are we gonna use them as, as baseline for this year or as some measuring tool from two years ago? And how do we go forward from there?
I think one of the things we have to do is utilize, uh, that data uh, and, and really take a look at what that data is telling us in terms of where our students currently are. Uh, and, and we're going to use that and work, uh, work to inform instruction based on what the needs are as that data determines, because that data, um, is current, right? That's the, that's where we are at the moment, given everything that, uh, our students have been through. So.
What kind of, my question, I guess Trish asked the same kind of question. What kind of mitigation are we going to allow in terms of where the student might be versus where the student should be? And what we have outlined in Rubicon is the things that ought to be talked.
Yep, so, so we still have to strive towards that standard, right? And, and then work at building scaffolding and support and remediation for kids along the way. Dr. Stratus?
Yes, so, listen, Campbell, we recognize that as we finalize map data, we are looking at realigning the pace, the spoken sequence in Rubicon. Right now, we're working on the pace of the spoken sequence that was there. Um, but we are looking at realigning. We have our meeting bi-weekly addressing and reviewing detail the work that's being executed to along the sources. And when the map data is finalized for us, that is one of our number one items, also in a comparison of fall to fall. I, I know that we're going to look at last year's second grade to this year's third grade to take that type of, some type of diagonal love as well, um, working with our data department in detail. Very closely, I have that issue. I have to share that with you.
Uh, I guess, I guess I'm also asking if, if we have any out of the box programs that's going to address this, this situation that we're in, something that's going to give support that's not generally a, uh, eight to three regular, regular school approach.
So are you making entry with regard to any other interventions we may be providing?
Okay.
Right? Because we have made some, um, additional support purchases for our children here in certain of the lower grades. The next round, Greenbox, one target is reading, uh, much more essential skills for our children. The second one, Greenbox, is a self-located math program. It's our first year integrating both of these additional programs. We've been able to work with iReady and when all of our elementary schools have chosen to pick up iReady as a tool for our reading, as well as we've been able to utilize the iReady Math Orbital Tool that is given to us this year as a free opportunity for our schools. We have three of our middle schools utilizing iReady. And in the area of reading to extend that one step further, we have reading plus in middle schools. I have two high schools right now looking at an integration as well.
Okay, uh, yeah, I'm not familiar with, oh, iReady, uh, components, but I'm just thinking that if we have a, uh, uh, overflow of students in one particular level and they, you know, let's say, second grade level and the fifth grade, and the fifth grade teacher has to teach fifth grade reading, uh, what kind of, you know, support is that fifth grade teacher going to get? Uh, other than you're telling me that she's going to do some cheer and, and intervention. It, it's going to be a situation where we obviously need some emergencies. And I, and I'm anticipating that to be across the board as we go forward. Whenever we get out of this pandemic, our number is going to be so skewed until we're going to have to have some things that's different than the norm. And I, I'm just wondering whether we were thinking along those lines as we, as we, you know, gravitate to face to face and get more, more data. But, uh, thank you for your answers.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Orshak?
So I, I have a few questions. Um, many of them may pertain to scheduling at the school level, at the high school level. Um, I'm, I'm hearing that there are some discrepancies between in student enrollment for A days versus B days and that some of the classrooms have beyond the ten to fifteen student, uh, students in them. Can you speak to that?
At this time, Mrs. Orshak, no, I can't. I did not prepare to give that type of analysis in the classrooms. I do apologize, ma'am. I can't get that type of information for you.
Okay, um, what about, I'll try one more. Uh, what about, um, you know, our electives being maxed out? And we have students at the high school level who has, who have full course loads of all core courses and no access to electives. Is it, does that fall under your report or should I save it for COVID?
I have to share with you, Mrs. Orshak, I did not prepare to provide information with master scheduling. But I, I will ask Dr. Rodriguez.
Yeah, if I would just say, if I may, that as you hear those concerns, because I haven't heard that at all. So if you hear any concerns like that, that you would just forward that to us so that we can look into it right away and, uh, and see what the situation is. So whenever you hear those things, if you send them our, uh, we can jump on it.
Okay, um, I'm going to say, and I'm going to say this delicately. Sometimes employees, um, you know, they, you know, they're reluctant to come to the microphone at board meetings or, um, they, you know, they're reluctant to come to the microphone at board meetings or perhaps make themselves known for, you know, some expressing fear of scoldings and retaliations at their level. And so I'm trying to be quite sensitive here and bringing them forward with nameless, faceless individuals. I have had some concerns and perhaps Dr. Rodriguez, this, I can bring this up under COVID about DEHEC guidelines for separation of desks in this classroom layout. Is that, am I best to ask that question when we get to your report?
Sure, you can, that's fine. I mean, I think ultimately, you know, what I think is important here is that your interest lies in trying to resolve any matters that your constituents bring to you. If it happens to be a teacher, that happens to be a teacher. If it happens to be a parent, that happens to be a parent, or a student, or whoever is bringing it forward. All I'm suggesting is asking that for the matter of expediency, that when that, that you share with me or with our team of what that is, I don't need to necessarily know who that is. I just need to know what that is and maybe where that is, right? My objective is not, is not about punishment or whatever of people. My objective is to resolve matters so that our system continues to move forward and shine and perform as a highly effective system, right? So as you encounter those questions or concern, it's not about punishment, it's not about retaliation, but rather about improvement. So if you, if you see something or you hear something, share it immediately so that we can, we can jump on it.
Okay. And I'm sure they're listening in and find your words very comforting this evening. I know that they appreciate what they're hearing. So I'll wait till your COVID piece and then I'm going to ask you to paint a picture of what the COVID classroom should look like according to DEHEC and guidelines we're following district wide. So I'll wait on that, Dr. Rodriguez.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Smith?
First, let me start off by saying, since Dr. Rodriguez and Ms. Orshak was talking upon that, the situation that I was going to possibly say as well, you know, I too have had my constituents and different community members and teachers to reach out to me and they are very afraid of retaliation. I know even though, you know, we said that we take them very seriously and I think that, you know, that, you know, it's easier said than done to relay that information, especially when you can put that information back to someone into a specific building to where those things are occurring at. For instance, if a teacher says, or it's just that, I'm just going to throw out of school over at Mary River High School, that there's a math class with 20 kids in it, then we know there's only one math class at Mary River High School with 20 kids in it. So we know it came from someone or possibly that teacher, if she was frustrated or she spoke out about it. So, you know, it's easier said than done, what we possibly, how we can possibly handle those things or getting the information back to the superintendent, because, you know, we as board members, we must protect our constituents and the people who trust us as well. And I just want to put that out there, not, not, not getting into a conversation with Dr. Rodriguez. You've said how you feel, but I just want to put it, put it out there that it's easier said than done and we also have people who trust us that we're duly to be, to keep their personal identification hidden and protect them as much as possible as well, you know, because apparently we do, we do with other things. We can't pick and choose when we, when we protect people, people's identity, you know, so it has to be done across the board. So, you know, so I just want to put that out there.
I fully understand that. It's just that, you know, you're asking me to solve a problem, just not necessarily telling me where it is or any specifics about it to hone me into the solution, you know? That's all I'm suggesting, right? That I want to be a part of the solution. In order to do that, I just need enough information to work on that to find the solution. That's all I'm saying. I understand where you're coming from, too.
Thank you. And my second question was going to be, are there, are there any electives that are requiring students to come to school face to face?
So, Mr. Smith, at this time, we're working at a hybrid, where we have students coming into schools two days a week, one group, another group coming in. We do have virtual students where teachers are working virtually with the students as well. So if there's something specific, if you could share that with me, you know, our division works to problem solve and amplify resources. You know, we're here to work in collaboration for any question you may have directly. You want to share that with me?
Well, you know, I thought this would be an easy question just because of the fact that we had a, we were running a unified district, as in everyone would be on the same program so that it would help the district to the floor to flow more better as a whole versus each individual school being on their own personal program. I just thought that as, and that that question would be a, basically a basic question that would be, excuse me, not basic, it would be a universal question throughout the whole district, whether it's, whether all students, when it comes to electives, that either they have to be in the building or they don't. I think that if it's not, then Dr. Rodriguez, that's something that concerns me, that that question is not universal, that whether all electives, they either require you to be, to be there face to face or not, because let's remember that we are offering parents virtual. So we can't tell them how their kids can be educated or how their kids can't be educated. That's a concern, that is a concern of mine.
I would just say that, you know, I think we should all be cognizant of the fact that, that, you know, we try to, to deliver full virtual instruction, full face to face instruction, okay? We're running two schools in every school, okay? But you don't have double the staff, right? So you do the best that you can, given the requests and the course requests that are out there, the resources that you have, the impacts of accommodations and all of those sorts of things to provide students with the maximum opportunities available to you. The fact is that we didn't double the number of staff members we have, right?
Right.
On two schools in every school. So what we did was to provide the education that we can provide, you know, given the fact that we don't have double the resources to run two schools. We need to provide a virtual option for everybody, right?
Right.
And then we needed to provide a face to face option for everybody. Those are the realities, right? Scarcity is about unlimited wants, but limited resources.
Mr. Smith, I want to ask you very quickly that from the district perspective, we have never given a directive to a school or to a school leader that with regard to the provision of a particular elective that students must come to the school site. But at the same time, I am not saying that a school has not actually done that, but we are not aware of it, but we have not given any mandates to schools in particular that for a particular class, for a given class, that a student must come to the site.
Thank you. Thank you. That's a little more clarification. I would also add that I hope that if we needed more staff at this time, if we're getting funding for it, that we not, that we are not afraid to use it and if we need more staff to help us through this pandemic, that we, that we do, that we do, that it does, it does come for the board or that we are knowledgeable of that if that is, if that is a, an issue or a concern. I do hope that we would be apprised of that information. As well, my last question is this, I believe I heard Mrs. Walton and Mr. Stratus text, but, but I'd like to know, Dr. Rodriguez, what is the process for applying for, applying as a virtual teacher? Is it a district level? Is it a school level? What's the process?
Are you talking about for an accommodation?
Just in general, like, I mean, she said, she's, I believe, I don't want to call, but I believe Ms. Walton said some teachers are told from the building level and some teachers are possibly told from.
Sure. I think I understand now. So either way, whether you're an accommodation teacher or whether you're not accommodation but a virtual teacher, right?
Right.
So the accommodation teachers had to submit an application through the HR team and the HR department, which Ms. Walton's team handled, right? Additionally, beyond that, schools may have had needs for additional virtual teachers or, or fewer virtual teachers, right? Depending upon what families opted for and selected within their respective individual schools. Now, as a matter of general practice, principals assign their staff to, to their course loads every year, right?
Right.
And depending on the needs based on course requests and course selections, right? So this is, this is no different in that principals had to assess and determine what the course selection requests were, but then in addition, determine what the demand was for virtual versus the demand for face to face and then assign staff that way. So the accommodation teachers, those who received accommodations were virtual, but those who, who did not receive accommodations or didn't ask for accommodations, some may have been placed in virtual teaching positions because there was a need for virtual. Did I characterize that correctly?
Yes, you did. That's correct. Because I'll give you an example, Mr. Smith. You might have a middle school who needed 14 virtual teachers to take care of the caseload and there were only three accommodations approved for that building. At that point, the principal needed to assign the other nine teachers to be virtual teachers. And how the principal assigns those teachers is really left up to the principal. It could be that there were teachers who wanted to be virtual teachers and there were teachers who the principal thought would be best suited because of the course that needed to be taught as a virtual teacher. So the decision really is a school-based decision based on the needs of that particular school.
Okay. So basically, it's not a district decision, it's just a principal decision.
That's correct.
So let me throw this in there, what if there's a doctor's, a doctor's, a doctor has some concern about, about a teacher being in the building?
That is the accommodations piece. So the 133 teachers we talked about that had accommodations, that's what HR did. We made sure that those teachers that had medical excuses that needed not be in the building were taken care of first because they had those accommodations. So principals handled those first. They came through HR to get those accommodations.
And are they still allowed to do that?
They are still allowed to apply. The window is closed, but they will apply. At this point, unless they're going through FMLA, which is a law that's in place all of the time, all year, pandemic or not, they can go through that format, but the accommodations will still come at the school level because if there's not a need for a virtual teacher in that particular building, then there cannot be made an accommodation in that building. That teacher might have to be moved somewhere else.
Right. And I'm just asking that because I have a concern, what if I just found out yesterday that I was having, God forbid, a teacher was having congestive heart failure or something like that and would we not allow them to, to, because they just found that out, then would we not allow them to, to apply for virtual?
Oh, yes, we will. See, we were talking about two different FMLAs. We were talking about EFMLA, which is the COVID FMLA, which is that emergency piece. But there's always the FMLA in place forever and a day. It doesn't go anywhere. So if you're ill, you have the right to apply for that at any time and be accommodated based on your medical provider's request.
My last question. Can you, at some point in time, can you use up FMLA?
Well, FMLA is, and I might be getting into too much detail, but you can apply, any employee can apply for FMLA every year after they've worked 1,250 hours. And the law says that they're guaranteed 60 days of FMLA with another 30 days awarded at the district's discretion. So per year, there, there will be 90 days of FMLA for an employee that's been with us for at least one year or worked 1,250 hours in that year.
Thank you, Anya. I only ask some more questions. Thank you.
Good night.
Dr. Rodriguez, this is just my opinion, but I don't think, I don't, my sense is that retaliation from the district level is not nearly as much a concern for some teachers as retaliation at the building level is. And I get a little concerned when I hear that's the principal's decision. You know, I think there has to be some criteria and guidance out of district in how to make these decisions. The old joke used to be that we have 32 school districts because we have 32 schools and I'd hate to see this get that again, especially since the district staff has been beefed up with the addition of a deputy superintendent. So I hope that all of the building officials get a very clear message out of the district that any kind of implied or direct retaliation is just totally unacceptable and that's a keeping your job issue. For what that's worth, that's my input.
Then, sir, you know, has been clear, the retaliation is not acceptable or appropriate. So that strongly has been clear. Good? Okay. Move on to the next topic, goal three, under fiscal responsibility. Tanya or Reggie regarding the budget update?
Yes, I'm going to take this tonight. So for the budget update, I just want to give some background. At the May 19th board meeting, we, the board certified a temporary budget for the fiscal year 2021 and that mirrored the previous year's budget for in total revenues and expenditures. There were some modifications, a handful of those, which were spelled out in a table, rearranging certain aspects of the expenditure budget. But the budget, the board took this action in response to the State General Assembly adding a continuing resolution or adopting a continuing resolution to keep their budget at the state level the same as the prior year and the same spending level. During that May meeting, the board discussed resuming that conversation once the legislature had adopted a budget and had made some major decisions within that, including, which would include teacher salary increases and other benefit increases as well. However, during the September session that recently closed, the Senate adopted a spending plan that would include a step increase for teachers. However, the House of Representatives did not agree with that version and sent it back to the House Ways and Means Committee. The House Ways and Means Committee did not meet again during the September session, so the budget bill expired. The, the House Ways and Means Chairman said that he would prefer to wait until January when more information on. when more information on state revenues were available and when the overall state economy, economic information would be available. And so as of right now, we know nothing more than we knew back in May when we were discussing the budget. So at this time, although I had prepared to discuss a proposed amended budget calendar for the fiscal twenty-one school year, current year, at our, at Thursday, October eighth, Finance Committee meeting, unfortunately, that amended proposed budget is no longer valid because we have no new information. So unfortunately, we are on a holding pattern until January when the state reconvenes and decides whether to take up the matter and make changes or to hold the budgets at the same level for the remainder of the year. So at this point, we have no movement from the state level. Therefore, there are no recommendations coming forward for any changes in the current year budget. So at this time, I'll be happy to open up for a discussion and take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Molly.
Otherwise, you get that. He can just talk and it'll.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. One of the things, it's, it's almost a blessing that we have to wait. Because we don't know what our local property tax revenue is going to be either. December is when we first start to get some indication of what it's going to be. By January, we should have an, some kind of an indication. I, from what I've been told by county council and other members, they are not optimistic. All that our operations money comes from the four to six percent books. And what you pay on your cars when you get your license and so on, that's a little bit. Most of it comes from businesses and second property owners. Unfortunately, second property owners are not doing very well right now for rentals, for tourists, and so on. Businesses are not doing very well right now. So if you take an optimistic look, we will barely get to where we're supposed to get local revenue. A pessimistic look, we could be in trouble. So I'm optimistic. I'm hoping that it will do better. But until we know, and that's going to be in December, any tweaking of the budget or looking at the budget, other than to be very, very prudent on how we spend. Luckily, we can't go anywhere. Luckily, we're probably not going to spend as much on utilities and other things. There may, there'll be some savings like there was last year. Remember last year, we got some monies from FEMA that we hadn't counted on. We're not going to get monies from FEMA this year. Also remember, we kept the billage the same. And last year, our revenue didn't meet expectation by $2 million. So this is a very difficult time. And I, I don't really know how to go forward, other than say, be prudent with the spending and hope that it'll get better. Hope is not a method, but I don't know. I don't speak. Thank you.
Okay. Next topic is the grants update. I asked Dr. Stratos to talk to us about, this is in relation to the grant writer. And I'll let Dr. Stratos talk to us about the grants.
So thank you again, boards members. Have you recall in spring, we submitted a grant through Research Associates, the Magnet Schools Assistance Grant? We received notification that our grant has made three readings. On top of that, we received the notification from the Office of Civil Rights, which is actually a good indication that we've done three readings and now OCR is reviewing our grant. I'd like to give you a series of events of what has transpired since that communication. On Tuesday, September twenty-second, Terry Bennett, the Director of Grants Management, Management Programs, received a communication from Bianca Costello, Attorney at the Office of Civil Rights. Terry Bennett communicated with Research Associates' primary grant writer, Jenny Porter. She was our primary writer on the grant that we collaborated. As a result of that phone call and reach out on communication, a meeting was set up on Friday, September twenty-fifth, for a team from year ISD, as well as Terry Bennett, to meet with the OCR team. September twenty-fifth, we met with the team. September twenty-eighth, we provided, we actually received the summary of notes. On September twenty-ninth, we collaborated on our response. On October first, the final responses was provided to OCR. And at this point, we got received confirmation of receipt of our response with, with the documents to OCR. I'd like to just give you a quick reminder that we recognize that this grant is rather competitive. We submitted the $12.3 million grant focused on schools, seven schools here in Bubin County. We focused primarily on two clusters. Cluster A included Mossy Oaks, Bupin Middle, Ladies Island Middle, and Bupin High. That cluster focused on an integrated arts model in support of a medical program. Cluster B focused on our schools on the northern part of our county, building again on an integrated arts model, including technology and cybersecurity. So at this time, we are waiting for a response. And again, it is subject to budget levels at the federal level. We recognize that there was a communication of a whole of funding for management programs. After speaking with OCR, they did share with us that that is being under review. And I just wanted to provide you an update of the status. In addition, just rather quickly, we gave seven to their traditional grants to work with our early prepaying tablets to get some devices in the hands of our young children. We can receive one communication from Low Country, I want to make the Postal Communication Foundation of Low Country. And Hilton Head has provided us with a grant. I don't have the final grant award letter. As soon as I receive that, I will share you the exact amount with you. That's a quick update on grants. Thank you.
Next topic this evening, I'd like to ask Dr. Stratos, as part of the COVID nineteen update. And as part of that update, important to note that county council had a meeting and were, were looking at possible ways that they could support also some of the local service providers that are helping to, to meet some of the needs out there for parents who are working. And essentially, they're looking at providing some grants or some dollars to some of those local service providers. I believe they'll offset some of the costs for, you know, families to send their kids to any of those areas. And so Dr. Stratos attended a, a meeting with county council. I believe Mr. Guyer might have been there as well. And so Dr. Stratos.
This meeting was conducted on September twenty-eighth. It was myself and Dr. Campbell from ISD who attended the county chamber meeting. The purpose of our, of our attendance was to provide support for the county chamber funding to community virtual learning sites. At the time of the meeting, the county agreed to fund $200,000 to community sites for supporting student virtual learning. The fiscal need for funding will be Postal Communication Foundation of Charleston. County Administrator Ashley Jacobs is a rank, a rank in fiscal management. During the presentation, information regarding Bupin County School District's assistance to these learning sites was shared by, by our county council representative, Paul Somerville. At the September twenty-eighth county council meeting, Councilman Somerville shared the following. He shared that we are conducting two, we conducted two pre-planning meetings prior to opening up schools on September eighth with our community partners. Community learning centers are serving approximately 600 students in our, in these learning centers. Our division of instruction that has provided instructional materials for various community sites. These community sites are also having access to breakfasts and lunches. Currently, they are serving over 306 breakfasts and about 400 lunches. This totally plus programs that are coordinating food to dental services, and they will continue this throughout the school year. I want to make mention that our meals are free through this academic program, academic calendar. We're also providing site-based, face-based, technology support to our community centers. We've also worked at assigning staff members from designated school sites to support each community center, four per building. This membership includes instructional coach, a counselor, a DMS, and social worker. They will, they are available and allocated by phone and virtual to work with these sites in the areas academics as well as social emotional needs of our students. Several churches are also still waiting on the DSS waiver. Councilman Somerville also shared professional development was, was provided for the learning centers on September sixteen. It may note that Ken Stadler, the local mother in our community, but also she works for South Carolina Department of Commerce, had been working diligently to help provide assistance and applications for the DSS for these churches and giving information for grant money. I'd like to add that on September thirtieth, Councilman Somerville participated in our Bupin County School District, our Upshower Community Meetings. And they are targeting through this funding of the $200,000 predominantly to assist community learning centers in Will Branch and the St. Helena area. Any questions?
I couldn't ask you.
So do we know about, from that donation, that amount? Do we know how many students that's going to serve?
So right now, we're serving, my numbers of this morning are just under 700. They had their first reading, if I'm correct. Mr. Guyer, I believe they have to go through two more readings prior to confirmation of the release of that funding, funding from the county.
I understand that any of those service providers can apply for, right?
Yes.
No, I was just trying to get an idea of how much, how many students that would cover. I understand we have a certain amount of students right now that are in some type of program. But I was trying to figure out how much that 200, how far is that going to go, basically?
I could reach out to County Administrator, Mrs. Jacobs, to find out the full details. That was next to that, people like that, yeah.
That'd be great. Yeah, I just wanted to know, you know, how much is that going to cover and if that could do some more that can, if that can be mirrored and modeled elsewhere.
If I can make a comment to that. When I visited the YMCA at Port Royal, they do charge parents that can afford it a fee. But they're spending a lot of money going out and they aren't even going out to pick up migrant children, children and migrant workers, bringing them in. They're paying for them. They're paying for the support for many of their children. The whole thing, because their parents can't afford to pay the fee. So it's going to be based on need and there is a waiting list. And the waiting list is considerable, but they're maxed out on staff. And that's why the churches are trying to come together to get their certification so that they can apply to get some of that money. But it's not going to offset what the parents that can afford to pay. It's only for those of heaven. One of the questions was asked at that meeting to, well, what happens when we go full face to face? And they really didn't understand that there are parents that are saying, we're going to be virtual. We're going to be virtual no matter when we go face to face. And that was something the council didn't understand. So we tried to educate them on that. And we're kind of hopeful that we're going to get through the next two readings. And frankly, we're probably going to need more. But we have to give them some data on what our needs are.
Move on to the next segment of the COVID nineteen update. Dr. Bradley, I just want to talk about certainly our return to face to face, hybrid model and other topics. So Dr. Bradley. You might as well jump in on the service providers first because, because we just finished that topic. So it'll sort of segue nicely.
So thanks. I think the perfect timing in terms of the discussion about the community learning centers referenced by Dr. Stratos and Colonel Guyer. And so just as, to reiterate, there are several ECSD families who currently make use of these community learning centers. And these centers vary and range from local churches to boys and girls clubs and YMCA. And at last count, we have partnered with about twenty centers to date. These centers serve approximately 600 of our students. And it is worth noting that these young people who really spend a significant amount of time there. And so it is obviously in the district's best interest to know what's happening with our students structurally. They are not in our physical presence. I recently conducted a walkthrough at the Port Royal YMCA like Colonel Guyer, just to really get a sense of the student experience. And I wanted to take a moment to report to the board what we learned, what I learned. As expected, it really is more challenging for our younger students, particularly our kindergarten through second grade students, to manage the expectations of virtual instruction. This is not necessarily new information or new revelation for us. It's challenging for them to self-correct, to self-regulate, and to persist through all of their lessons without distraction. Like the incredible efforts of the, of the support personnel, I just really want to pause for a moment to say that the efforts that the support personnel at those centers has, is tremendous. But at the same time, they're not teachers, right? They are in spaces with students who have instructional needs and they're doing their level best to make sure that they are keeping them on track, that they're keeping them focused, that they're keeping them engaged. And in many ways, supplementing what the virtual experience that the teachers are actually providing. And so they, I, I got to personally observe that, I think, really was tremendous for me and tremendous learning for me. It's also worth noting that during the early weeks of, of the school year, we've really worked hard to simply be operational with virtual instruction. And what I mean by that is the process of uploading lessons, establishing a predictable and reliable cadence of engagement, refining routines. But now the time is for us to focus on quality. And so there are really a few things that we know can make a difference in the student experience, the student virtual experience, particularly for our younger students, not just students who make use of the community centers, but really for all students. That is reiterating common professional expectations for virtual instruction, right? I think on any given day, if you walk into a building and you would observe an English class or a math class, you would see the deployment of a variety of different instructional strategies and processes. And that's predictable. But with regard to virtual instruction, there does most certainly need to be a baseline of expectation, not just instructional and pedagogical expectations, but behavioral and professional expectations as well. We've done a little bit of work to that end, up to date or earlier this summer. But it's time for us to kind of go back and revisit those expectations because we want at any given current in time for a parent who is observing a lesson to be able to look in and say, you know what? From this grade level or from this school or for this particular. From this grade level or from this school or for this particular content area, I am seeing at a, at a minimum some consistent practices being deployed. Also, we're looking into identifying teachers who have demonstrated advanced proficiency and sharing those practices district-wide. You know, we always, there's a, there is a euphemism that we use oftentimes, and we say that the experts are in the room. And quite frankly, our district has a wonderful troupe of teachers who are, who are really mastering the delivery of virtual instruction. And it would behoove us or we'd be remiss not to actually, you know, kind of take advantage of the wonderful practices that they are demonstrating and then sharing those best practices. That is a simple way of, of making sure that there is internal professional development and knowledge sharing that costs you nothing and, and takes little effort to actually make happen. And then lastly, really supporting principals to engage regularly in the process of observation, supervision, and feedback with clear protocols for gathering information on what's happening in every virtual classroom. You know, principals, as Dr. Rodriguez mentioned a little bit earlier, are actually running two schools. They're running face-to-face school and they're running a virtual school. And so their responsibilities are doubled than what they normally would be. And so the typical cadence or process of going into classrooms and observing practices and giving feedback and things of that sort has been doubled, right? And so now we are really kind of trying to figure out how do we make sure that principals have enough time or scheduling their days in a way that they can pop into those virtual classrooms? And also now that while, while we are in hybrid to get into those live classrooms and give actual feedback to, to teachers. So I just wanted to pause for a minute this evening to let the board know that the students' daily experience, particularly for those who are in our community learning centers, are, are really on our radar. But I will also say that because we have a significant number of students who are receiving face-to-face instruction now that we are going to hybrid, we're quickly inching towards a bit of academic normalcy for these young people. That's just really some language that I wanted to make sure that I threw out this evening. That getting to academic normalcy has been something that we have been looking forward to in a very real way. It helps us be very predictable in terms of our actions and our engagement, not only with our students, but also with our teachers. And we really believe that getting to hybrid instruction is a step forward in that regard.
I would just like to add to Dr. Bradley's comments that when, when he and I visited Y M C A in Port Royal today, I saw the similar challenges that they were facing. For example, at the Buffton Boys and Girls Club, right? It's with our younger learners, and I see it with my own two children at home. When I talk to them and, and I talk to, to my wife, that, that, you know, because they're middle school, because they're high school, they're something more independent, right? And so they're certainly able to stay on course and follow. The challenge really comes with, with our, with our little ones, right, for sure. So, so, you know, it was certainly a good experience to connect with them. And they are doing really a great job at those, those service providers. They are really doing a, a Omen's job, you know, with, with what they're, they're challenged with, right? And so my hat's off to them. I think they're doing some great things, and we're, we're excited to, to stay connected with them. They, they were very complimentary about the support that they have received from technology-wise, from district staff, from, from I S D, from school food services, so, so taking care of kids. So, Dr. Bradley?
That's correct. I'll pause there for any questions. And so a bit of good news. As was mentioned, and I think as everyone knows, Monday, yesterday, October fifth represented kind of our second first day of school for the year. Represented the, the start of our, our district's transition to hybrid instruction. We welcomed approximately sixty-six hundred students into our buildings, which represents roughly a quarter of our district's total enrollment. Although we are all aware this milestone was significant insofar as it represented the first time our schools have been open to students since March, that is, with the exception of Leap Week. As guidance, each of our schools have prepared site-based, comprehensive reentry plans, and most, if not all, have posted those plans on their individual school websites. The plans provide critical information for parents ranging from updated protocols and procedures, daily schedules, and other relevant reentry details for parents that they can reference at their convenience. I would also say that schools were given a pre-populated template of information, which meant that once their school reentry plans were completed, roughly about eighty-five percent of the information within their plans were common and consistent across all schools. And then obviously for things like learning procedures, after-school procedures, lunch procedures, and things of that sort, playground procedures, those are going to be individualized for every school. By all measures, I would say that we have really enjoyed two really wonderful days. Senior staff was deployed to schools to make firsthand observations and provide support as necessary to schools on yesterday. We really wanted to see morning procedures and handling of food service and whatever else could be observed that would provide us a comprehensive snapshot of the day and how our transition into hybrid went. I personally visited five schools and really was thoroughly impressed by several things. First, the clear enthusiasm of our teachers for being back. Second, the willing and cooperative adherence to safety protocols and expectations. Third, the absolute wondrous displays of teaching. I think Dr. Rodriguez can attest as well that we really saw teachers making it happen in classrooms. We saw, we observed simultaneous instruction. We saw teachers being flexible and accommodating to student needs. We saw a clear emphasis on safety protocols and demonstrated patience for our younger students. And let me just pause momentarily also to also say that, you know, I've been working very closely with our principals over the past over weeks. I just wanna take a moment to publicly celebrate them. They have been amazing. We held an end-of-day Zoom call with each of them yesterday evening just to thank them for their leadership, for their poise, for their patience. We wanted to specifically let them know that we appreciate all of the efforts that we are able to observe and see and see the benefit of. But we also know that principals do so much work that actually benefit their school communities that we don't see. The late nights in their offices, the handling of parent issues that don't get to bubble up to district office. We wanted to just really take a moment to acknowledge the fact that the extent to which we are as effective as a district in many ways hinges on the effectiveness of our principals and it in many ways is a very thankless job. And so because this is National Principals Appreciation Month, we thought it was fitting to take a few moments this evening to just acknowledge the wonderful efforts of those principals. And I would ask respectfully if you'd join me in just acknowledging them. And that, Madam Chair, concludes my.
Can we do this?
Every single one of them has been amazing. So, Madam Chair, members of the board, that concludes my hybrid instruction update. I'll pause for any questions.
Mr. Bill Campbell.
Yeah, Dr. Bradley, you mentioned about our, our resources, that community resources. And you said that they're not teachers and, and generally they're doing the best they can from sometimes minimum links educationally to, to what's going on in today's world. But what can we do with our resources of teachers, educators, to support them in terms of what they're trying to do? How can they help bridge that gap between, there's six hundred students that's coming to them for support and what's expected in the classroom?
Yeah, well, first of all, I'd say that their numbers have dramatically reduced since now that we, we've gone to hybrid instruction, at least in terms of the overall number of students that they're serving. So for example, when I was at the Port Royal Y M C A today, on a typical day prior to hybrid, they would have roughly about seventy students, right? Today, I think between the two classes or the two spaces where the, the children were, there were no more than maybe eighteen. So I think at a, at a minimum, their ability to kind of handle the workload and address the, the needs of those students, they can be much more effective than that just simply because the numbers have reduced because we've transitioned to hybrid. But to your question, I was thinking about that as I visited, and when I came back from my visit, I made a beeline to Dr. Stratos, and we sat there and we talked about what are the, some of the things that we could actually do. And we just began to kind of brainstorm a few things. One of the things that I threw out there, and I hope that Ms. Walton doesn't kill me for this, but, you know, we really thought about there might be some benefit to, you know, kind of deploying an itinerant teacher in those spaces. You know, we have, I mean, in the room that I observed today, we had about four or five first graders, maybe two or three second graders. And, and all of them, as they were finishing up their Zoom activities, we thought, I thought at least that there was still an opportunity if they could be engaged by a certified professional to be able to continue some additional work, whether it was in math or reading or intervention or things of that sort. And so a professional in those rooms as a complement to the support personnel at the Y M C is something that I thought at a minimum would be, would be something that we should look into. I think Dr. Stratos agreed with that assessment as well.
That's, we are on the same page. That's exactly my thought, in terms of what we, what we can do.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Before I ask my question, I just want to publicly thank everybody, the entire staff, the principals, the teachers, everybody. This has been quite, quite an endeavor to, to offer this hybrid, which I think is the right thing to do, to phase it in. And so just first of all, thank you very much for all, for all the young ones. I've been visiting them very, very late nights and very early mornings. So my question is something I brought up last meeting. I'm concerned about those teachers that might be teaching face-to-face and virtually at the same time in the classroom. And Ms. Walton had mentioned maybe they knew some permanent sub in some of those classes where we know that teachers are doing that. Do you have an idea of how that has played out? Are there many teachers that are doing those during, at the same time?
It's very hard for me to tell you how many, but there are, there are definitely some. And I think one of the things that we realized when we initially said that we were going to hybrid instruction is that we got a lot of questions from parents and families around, number one, what would happen on those two days, those two off days if you were a student versus a B student? And then number two, there was a clear demand for five days of continuous instruction. What we realized was that the only way that we could really actually make that happen was by, by, you know, creating a scenario where teachers would be doing what I'm calling simultaneous instruction. We did not make that an expectation, but ironically, through the own resourcefulness of our teachers and our principals, that was actually something that they were doing themselves. So my point is that even without a directive from the district, we had schools saying, you know what, we're gonna provide five days of continuous instruction, and this is how we're going to do it. We're really concerned about mandating that to be the process. And so all of the kind of public communication that we've had is that we were going to allow some measure of site-based autonomy so long as certain guardrails that we prescribed were honored. The guardrails were, number one, five days of instruction. Number two, we wanted to make sure that the pacing of, for virtual students and face-to-face students was the same, so we didn't have uneven outcomes. And then thirdly, what we wanted to do was to make sure that every class was hitting the, the state mandated number of instructional minutes. And so if they could do those three things, everything in the middle was, would be left up to the autonomy of the individual schools. And what schools to our surprise came back with was, you know what, we're gonna make this happen. If, if, if this is what's necessary, then that's what we're going to do. We're going to provide the professional development. We're going to provide the resources. And so what our response was, tell us what you need. And many of them said, we need more cameras, and we need more guidance on how to make this a proficient and effective process. And so, so my point is that through the resourcefulness of schools themselves, they actually, many teachers in many school buildings have actually taken it upon themselves to do the simultaneous instruction. And when it works, it really, really works well.
Right, right. And I understand that. Most teachers have a can-do attitude. They work doing, because they know what's best for their students, right?
Yes, ma'am.
My concern is they utter difficulty of manning a virtual class, albeit small and face-to-face, all day Wednesday virtual, Thursday, Friday, a different cohort. So I'm just wanting to ensure that there is, that support that was mentioned could be made with some teachers if needed.
Yeah, and, and so additionally, one of the things that we are continuing to do and will continue to do, just as Dr. Bradley mentioned, that we are highly engaged with our principals and the logistics and in the instructional component around this. We are additionally engaged with teachers, right? And so, for example, this Thursday, right, we have a, a session with our, our teacher pack, right? And so, so it is important to continue to, to, to understand, and it's one of the hallmarks that I said I would always do, is connect with our teachers and connect with our administrators and keep a pulse on that, right? And so Thursday, that's an opportunity for us to continue to inquire, check on, on this, and try to make the determinations to continue to support them as they, as they strive to.
Mrs. Johnson?
Hey, Madam Chair, my question is about P P E and the distribution of that between all the different schools. Specifically, I've got some questions about special education teachers and them having everything they need. And I just wanted to make sure that, you know, how do they get refreshers if they need it?
Yeah.
I know it's pretty much site-based, but.
Well, the, I mean, the, so, so, so we have delivered shipments of P P E to schools. We have continuously checked with our, our building administrators to make sure they have what they need. We continue to, to, to get shipments in, right? And we'll continue to deliver shipments and push those out to schools as needed, right? So particularly with special ed, if it's things like gloves or gowns, some, some, some special ed teachers, you know, really support students in terms of changing and things like that, right? And they need those P P E equipments. And so we have delivered things like gowns and gloves for our special ed teachers that need that or staff or employees that need that. It's gone to, to the mercies. We have additional shipments that are coming in so, so they can, the principals know. We had a principals meeting here. We communicated all of that. So they, they go there, they can get the equipment that they need, and then they essentially, we're, we're continuing to restock as we move blocks. We're, we're in that kind of, of a system to keep it going.
Okay, thank you.
That's a great question.
Ms. Swatch?
Dr. Bradley, some of the parents are concerned that we, we're making certain and we're visiting schools to make certain that our desks are properly distanced in our classrooms. Can you speak to that? What are D H X guidelines? How are we ensuring that these guidelines are implemented uniformly throughout our schools?
Yes, ma'am. That's a great question. And it's, it's a fair concern, especially because we've not allowed parents in the buildings to actually see classrooms just yet. I will tell you, it, it's very difficult for me to speak specifically about all of the D H X regulations. I know the statement is probably, I don't know if she's on the line. To speak more specifically, but I would tell you as a general matter, it really kind of depends. Classrooms are not all the same size. I think fundamentally, so long as the desks are six feet apart, so that we can honor appropriately the social distancing basic guidelines to ensure safety amidst of COVID, I think that that probably would be inadequate. in the midst of COVID, I think that that probably would be inadequate practice along with the wearing of PPE and things of that sort, things that I think are generally common knowledge. But what I would also say is that while we are really focused on making sure that we are honoring DEHAC guidelines, it really does most certainly provide a logistical challenge for us as we continue to think and move forward around the prospects of transitioning into another mode. Obviously, we're still trying to match the hybrid forward thinking and planning ahead. And so the ability to honor those guidelines, right, becomes a real challenge. But to your specific question, I'll let Ms. Stain ask about, I answered the question around some of the specifics of DEHAC work guidelines with regard to distancing of desks.
Hey, this is Jennifer. I'm not exactly sure. We've been really working with the principals about the importance of six feet and what not maintaining six feet would mean to them. So we provided them with guidance. Carol Quicksilver may have found out various schools and helped them set up and measure and position desks. So we've been working with a lot of the principals. They've been really great.
And Ms. Stain, can you present, can you let the public know what your position is, please? So they know who's talking?
Yes, I'm the risk manager.
So is it, is it a requirement? Is it just a guideline? How, does it have teeth at all? I mean, can we demand at the district's level that our schools must separate those desks at the six feet mark?
Guidance, sorry. The guidance from DEHAC and CDC as possible. But we have really asked them. At this point, it's not a huge problem to maintain six feet. When we go back to five day a week with in-person, it will probably become more of a challenge for the block and schools.
Now, the recommendation, I believe, from DEHAC and the CDC is six feet to the extent possible, but where not possible, they recommend the use of masks, right? As part of that. We're requiring masks in our buildings, so.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Campbell?
I'll sit down for the last time, but I can't answer a question since I have my hands up. In terms of students getting on and off the bus, I watched the video and it appeared that sometimes no one was monitoring the distance. And I think it sets a tone for when they get in the building, how they're getting off the buses. So I like, you know, just have someone more vigilant in terms of that.
Yes, so we are looking for six feet all the way along the board, right? Whether you're getting on a bus, whether you're getting off a bus, whether you're walking, whether you're in a classroom, right? So essentially, that's what we're looking for. I can tell you that I visited classrooms on Monday, yesterday. It seems like forever ago, but yesterday, okay? And I can tell you that the classrooms I visited, the schools I visited and the classrooms I went into, there was very definite, at least six feet apart in those schools. And I went to schools in the northern end of the county, and I went to schools in the southern end of the county. I can tell you there was at least six feet in those schools and buildings and classrooms. I observed our teachers coaching, mentoring and teaching our children the significance, the importance of hand washing, the significance and the importance of six feet distancing even when we walk, the importance and significance of mask wearing as some three really critical first layers of defense, if you will, around this. I observed students in compliance with that. But obviously, Mr. Campbell, you know, that is not just a one-time thing. That is an all-the-time thing and an everywhere thing that we need to capture and continue so that we can hone that in, not just through the building, but entry and exit from buses, so.
Yeah, I'm just suggesting that, you know, to we develop that thought process that we have to be vigilant, particularly when they are doing things that they're not observed or not monitored at full time. So and when they get the built-in mechanism, it'll be all right. But, you know, they're casually getting off the bus without adhering to it. And I'm sure even walking out of the corridor, the teachers aren't monitoring. The same thing might occur. And that's when the chance for contact and other things is greater more so than when there's observing a teacher in the classroom. So I'm just suggesting we are, you know, made aware that we do need monitoring in those particular areas, even to the point where we may have to hire some monitors or ask volunteers to come in to help monitor those open areas.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's really a great suggestion because it is an all-the-time thing. It's not just, you know, when you're in a classroom. It's all the time, walking the hallways, it's everything.
Mr. Campbell, let me very quickly, let me just add, and I kind of wanted to kind of go back to a question that Ms. Orshak raised around the extent to which or whether DEHAC regulations had teeth. One of the reasons that we have really focused on making certain that we are following DEHAC guidelines to the extent possible is because we wanted to be able to inspire the confidence of parents and families that the regulations that we share are actually rooted in something, right? So DEHAC is an administrative organization that shares best practices that schools can implement at their discretion. And so what we have found as we have reviewed DEHAC regulations, and they actually are sensible, and we think that better positions our students to be able to transition or to operate in any kind of instructional mode, while also making certain that parents know that the practices that we are deploying are rooted in something of substance. And so whether that is things like the distance between desks or playground protocols or how we keep things cleaning and sanitation, all of those kinds of things are not just kind of coming randomly or arbitrarily from the collective thought of district leadership that are actually rooted in the thought leadership that comes from administrative, why they recognize administrative agencies.
Yeah, you know, my point is simply that we were educating these children in a time that's not normal, but the education has to be consistent and sustainable. When they go out from school during the summer months on the beaches and elsewhere, we want them to have that mindset that the distance is important even then, without anybody being there to monitor them. So we have to be vigilant in how we are teaching them on a daily basis in all aspects of this. I mean, it's almost like boot camp in terms of where we are with these children. And it's new to them and it's new to us, but eventually we're going to turn them loose and they're going to be on their own. And those times are when they become most vulnerable, but hopefully we have done our due diligence. That's all I'm saying about it. You know, I know we try our best, but let's, you know, be vigilant.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
I'm a little puzzled at the degree of equivocation that I hear. We advertised to the public that there would be six feet between desks. Now I hear that we're working with the principals to get them to embrace that. How about a requirement that desks be six feet apart? And if you can't have a classroom with desks six feet apart, you do something else. This is still a pandemic. It's a pandemic that's forecasted to get worse. We, I am at a loss to understand why, if we didn't have all these things buttoned down, why did we open in the first place?
Yeah, I'm not aware of a particular place that doesn't have six feet. So if you are and you have that information, share it with me so we can go see. Because I...
I'm saying that I'm hearing language that we do it if we can, all right? So you lucked out. You went to the classrooms that had it, but there's no requirement in place. Again, it's thirty-two school districts. That's just my opinion, Dr. Rodriguez, and I think we opened a little early. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
My question, my question is, Dr. Rodriguez, could you please walk us through the process that will be utilized to disinfect the schools on Wednesdays for the second group of students?
Mr. Roddy?
Yes, so as far as campus sanitation goes, we've taken extra steps to ensure that school facilities are providing safe and healthy learning environments with protocols and actions such as we're disinfecting all bathrooms and high-touch common surfaces, which includes light switches, doorknobs, pushbars and vending machines at least three times a day.
That's not answering my, excuse me. Dr. Rodriguez, let me read my question again. Dr. Rodriguez, could you please walk us through the process that we will be utilizing in disinfecting the schools on Wednesdays for the second group? That's the question. I'm not sure where, what Mr. Otting is referring to. My question is, please walk me through the process.
Mr. Roddy?
I was trying to explain our sanitation process so I could tell you what we do on Wednesdays on top of what we do the rest of the day. So if all you're concerned about is Wednesdays, then Wednesdays are the deep cleaning day. What happens on Wednesday is those evening staff that are available are going to be pushed in earlier during the day. They're going to start cleaning classrooms as soon as they can. Classes that are empty, they will start in the early afternoon cleaning the classrooms, which may include wiping down desks, dusting, things like that. While teachers are in the room, we're asking teachers to, as soon as their teaching day is done, to leave the building so that we can begin cleaning all the hallways and classrooms and scrubbing the restrooms and vacuuming and everything that's going to go on. And that just gives us more time to attack more areas and make sure that everything is taken care of. I've said, I was very pleased the first day of school. The reports we were getting from staff and teachers and principals were that the schools were clean and looked well. We had a couple here and there, small, minor issues. For the most part, I was hearing overwhelmingly...
Thanks for answering that question. Thanks for answering that question. My second question is, how long will the cleaning and disinfecting process take approximately per classroom?
I can't tell you. I have a timeline for this.
At some point in time, Dr. Rodriguez, will you be able to give me a time? How long do you think it will take to disinfect every class?
Oh, I mean, what do you want me to do? We can try to get to that specific number for you if that's a relevant number. I just want, I want the classroom clean. That's what I want, you know, all of them. But if it's important for you all to know the specific amount of time that it takes to do it, we can see, we can try to get that number for you.
Well, okay. While the building is being disinfected, do you envision that staff members occupy their buildings during this time?
So what I can say is they're allowed early on to, while we're dusting and wiping down desks and things of that nature. But we really want staff out of the building when we're putting water on the floors and things like that because we don't want any slip hazards or anything of that nature. So that's why we're asking staff on Wednesdays to, as soon as their teaching day is done, to vacate the building so that we can then spend the rest of the evening tackling those issues. It's just that, you know, putting, you know, cleaning floors and scrubbing bathrooms and things of that nature just don't work very well with staff in the building.
The clean and disinfecting process, disinfecting process take place during their evening hours when there's no one in the building?
So yes, on an average weekday, that is correct.
Also, what are the devastating, if any, to clean the building during the hours is not occupied?
Could you repeat that question or rephrase it? I didn't quite understand it.
What are, what are the disadvantages, if any, to clean the buildings during the hours when it is not occupied?
I would say, as far as I'm aware, there's no disadvantage of cleaning a building while it's not occupied.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. It's nine fifteen, but we need either a motion to adjourn or a motion to extend.
I'm adjourned.
Second? So the motion was made to adjourn by Kathy Robine and Dr. Wozneski seconded. Any discussion? So can you guys, I can't tell because some plans were already up previously. Eris was up and I think Nellis was up. So Joanne's, I think, is new. Ms. Orshak?
So we would begin again tomorrow evening and then have executive session at the end of tomorrow evening, correct?
Yeah.
Continuation.
Please, ma'am.
Go ahead. So, yes, Ms. Orshak, so one thing that we'll have left on this COVID update is we added other matters at the beginning of the meeting tonight to talk about the mold issue. So we'll begin with that. And then we'll move forward through the rest, right?
Exactly. That's all the discussion is on the public session is where we, yeah. And then we chat what's left from the executive session on to the end of the meeting.
Sounds like a plan. Thank you.
All right, are we ready to vote? Want to just do a verbal?
Yes. Yes.
I'll lose them to the right.
All right, anybody opposed to adjourn? All right, we're, before we adjourn now, please leave, the people that are in this room, please leave the executive session documents here from all of you. All right, we're adjourned.